Meeting order. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on this holiday, February 14th, Valentine's Day. Ms. Branch, if you please call the board for the board.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Rose, if you please call your EDA to order. Order, the EDA meeting to order. Please call the board.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown.
He's stuck in traffic, he's coming.
Mr. Pierce, sir.
There.
Here, present. And Mr. Breeden.
The February 14th Planning Commission meeting is called to order, Mr. Brown, please.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
And Mr. Breeden.
Here.
Very good, thank you. Gentlemen, we have an amended agenda, are there any comments or questions regarding? If I may have a motion to a lot?
Mr. Chairman, if we adopt the amended agenda.
Sorry. Motion and probably seconded. In further discussion. Ms. Branch.
Mr. Patrick.
Hi.
Mr. Barber.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Bye. Okay, first up this evening, I recently attended the high schools career technical education presentation a few weeks ago. I found that there's possibly an awful lot of synergy between especially the EDA and certain, maybe even the planning commission with their comprehensive plan. And I asked the director to come up, Ms. Riley Langford, if you please come up and begin your presentation. I see many of the King William staff in house tonight, so welcome.
So I'm Riley Langford, I'm the senior professor at the high school and I have.
Andrew Borrego is the principal of King William High School.
And we just wanted to share with you guys our speaking programs that we currently have at the high school that we've heard a couple of weeks ago.
We give you the mic, please.
Okay.
You can, you can lose the mask.
All right. So if you want to turn over it.
Is there someone who has paper slides? Ms. Branch, you ready to change the slides when they need it? Okay, yes.
Okay, we're good. All right, we can go to the next one. So career and technical education is growing very quickly in the state of Virginia. Currently, we have 1,482 students enrolled in a career and technical program at the high school. This is enrollment, so this could be counting one student multiple times if they're enrolled in multiple of our CTE programs or classes. So for example, we could have someone enrolled in welding but also come back to the high school and take classes in agriculture. So that's duplicated, so that is a number that we see from sixth grade all the way to 12. But CTE is, it prepares our students for the workforce. So it prepares students to leave King William High School and enter into the workforce in King William County and be successful. Currently, we have programs that are housed at the high school and we send students off to bridging communities, which is in New Kent. The programs we offer at the high school, Agriculture, Air Force, Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, Marketing, Teachers for Tomorrow, Commercial Photography, Sports Medicine, Cosmetology. Our cosmetology and our welding programs are partnered with local businesses in King William. And then our proposed program for the 2022-2023 school year is our Emergency Medical Technician Program, which we're working closely with the King William Fire and Rescue to get us in going.
Thank you. On the next slide, we'll look at the Bridging Communities Technical Center. We see a variety of programs and opportunities there for our students to get credentials through dual enrollment programs, criminal justice, HVAC, coding game design, and so on and so forth. The idea there is to help students prepare for life after high school with the job skills necessary to be successful. Next slide, please. And finally, the big thing we're really pushing right now is trying to make sure our students who are not necessarily going through a four-year college or a two-year college transfer program are getting the skills they need to be successful. This year, we're going to run our comprehensive local needs assessment to examine the labor needs in the local community and these in the school division. Again, this assessment will be used to guide the decision-making process for CTE programs in 22-23 school year. And the term work-based learning is a huge umbrella under which there's a whole bunch of different opportunities for students to learn with local business leaders and different kinds of employment while they're in high school. And the key thing there is the students get to work in the community, earn credit towards graduation, but also work with our CTE teachers on job skills and improving their work in the community and for their employers. So again, the whole larger concept here is trying to make sure the students are ready for life after high school. Questions for us?
How many of these, some of these I know the students travel, like, I have a friend whose daughter went through the cosmetology. So how many of these are actually at the school and how many are?
So the only students that leave the high school are your bridging. Your bridging students and then our welding and cosmetology students. Welding and cosmetology leave our school and go to those local businesses that house those programs. So that, you know, that's our main, or we need the local community to partner with us to get our students, the experiences, to be prepared when they leave the school. Because we can put them in the classroom, we can teach them the skills they need, but the firsthand experiences, the hands-on experiences that the community and the businesses can give them is ultimately going to help prepare them.
Do any of the local businesses, do they have any requests for what they may want?
So currently, we run a co-op program where our students leave the school and go to work for credit, work-based learning credit. And we work with those businesses that those students are at and work with them through training agreements and try to align the classroom instruction with what they need in that business. So sometimes we do get requests from businesses, they'll reach out and ask if we have students that are interested in an internship or interested in a summer job. And we will try to find out what are their needs and then partner them with a student that is interested in that career field but also has the skills that are needed.
Oh, this has been a couple of years ago, but while I was knocking on doors, one lady asked what the public schools were doing so far as technical training. You know, I'm not exactly sure what they were looking for, but they were, you know, she stressed how much it costs to train individuals. I don't know whether they have reached out to you or maybe someone could reach out to them.
The local, the local businesses?
Yeah. Well, Nestle, Nestle, Pure Ring. And I don't know whether they do any summer intern shift, but they may.
So our whole goal is when we bring in new programs, bring in local work-based learning opportunities, we have to prove that the growth rate of those opportunities is large enough for us to invest money into. And that's where that local needs assessment and we also do Perkins Plan. That's where all of that kind of comes together and we have to prove that, you know, the growth in the community is there for us to invest our time and money into getting these students certified in those programs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Breeden, Mr. Rose, any of your folks, any questions? How are you all interfacing with the Bay Area Workforce Development Board? Or are you, especially when it comes to the local needs assessment, how are you tying into other workforce kind of initiatives that are in the community to kind of guide that or contribute to it?
Yeah, so this year is the first year we've actually had to complete that local needs assessment. What we're looking at, what are the local needs in the community and then kind of branching out from there. Work-based learning is something that is continuously growing. So I believe Ms., I'm, I can't remember right off the top of my head, but I can get it to you. But we do have an individual that comes in that works through the work-based learning. Can't remember, I can. Her name is Ms. Gray.
Yeah, so essentially, I'm sorry for the microphone steal. Essentially, we are trying to create those partnerships and those networks to kind of see what is out there. I can say, being in King William County schools for 14 years, my 14th year at the high school, six years as an administrator, the push 14 years ago was for everyone to go to college and that's right nor wrong is what it is. Now the push is to really push CTE programs to develop the workforce that the companies and the local community is going to need. So in terms of starting that process, working with the Bay Area, that's what we're trying to get rolling to really expand our capacity. We're a small school division, about 170, 180 graduates per year. If we can get 50, 60, 70 students to get certifications and credits through CTE, it's about a third of our graduates, it's a really high number. With about a third of our kids going to a typical four-year college, another third or so going to a two-year or straight into the workforce, that's a huge part that we're missing for not getting the CTE programs built up. It's kind of a bigger picture answer, I think, to that particular question.
Mr. Chair, what grades can you start in this program?
So official CTE programs start in the fifth grade. In King William, we start in sixth grade with Career Explorations, which is a required course in the state of Virginia. And then from there, we have programs at Hamilton Homes. And then students come into King William High School in hopes of hitting a pathway that is going to take them all the way to graduation with CTE courses with the expectation that we can have them graduating with some type of certification to leave the high school and go out and have a job.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll just, having firsthand experience, especially with the Bridging Center and with the work study, we actually had one of the Small Engine students with us last summer and we signed him on at the end of that term and he's now a full-time employee for us. So, you know, they've done a good job with, you know, reaching out to the local businesses, you know, especially over the Bridging Center in New Kent, and I'm sure they do a great job over in King William to finding businesses that will take on these kids, you know, some of them have, you know, good experience in the field, some of them need a little bit of guidance. And, you know, we were able to work with our, with our guy and when he graduated, we signed him full-time. He's been with us for every year now, so. Yeah, it's a, it's a really good, I mean, I think that's a case study right there and the success the school's having and getting, getting kids employed when otherwise they probably would have come out of high school a little bit, a little bit rudderless maybe, but.
Well, if nothing else, if Congress doesn't work out, they have perhaps a skill that they can fall back on. I was going to ask, are there any incentives for businesses to pick up these students? Are there any background, call it a background check on these employers to make sure that they're matched and can do what you need them to do? Any screening?
So I personally, when we are vetting an employer to send students to or vetting a student to send to an employer, it's literally on the phone talking to them. Students, when they, before they go into a work-based learning experience, they of course have to go through and create resumes and go through the job interview process. But it, when students go out into the community and go to work per se, they're going through the same hiring process that an employer would go through to hire a full-time employee. So they're getting that experience as well as whatever we're doing at the school to prepare them for that experience. Do you have something?
Just to kind of piggyback on that idea as well. Whenever there's a connection between the school and a local business under work-based learning, it's a large umbrella for a whole bunch of different things. There is a lengthy process that we have to go through as a school division to make sure that it fits with our comprehensive local needs assessment and with the goals for the outcomes for those particular programs. There's internships, externships, job shadowing, I mean, literally every single section has a huge list of things that we have to follow through on. So again, it's part of making sure that we're doing our due diligence to put the right kids in the right program, but also making sure that the community has those needs and that we're actually sending the right students to them for their needs as well.
Great. Mr. Rose?
I was just going to ask, are there CTE programs that are more utilized than others? Sort of curriculum that seems to get more students? What are that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, of course. So in King William, our agriculture program sees a ton of students come through it every year. That's just because you're in King William and agriculture is, is a high business. We also see, we have sports medicine, which right now is the only in-house medical field program that we have, which is growing exponentially with students. We've been able to add some extra classes this year because of that growth. So we see it really does correlate, correlate exactly with what the careers and what the occupational growth rate is in the community and in the state. We're seeing that trend with our programs and our students.
Do you all have opportunities where employers send people to the schools to work in the classroom with the students?
Yes. So that is one of our huge goals is to get employers to come in just as much as we go there. Of course, with COVID and restrictions on bringing people in and sending our students into other job locations, we have had to kind of get creative and go on Zoom and things like that. But we have tried to get them in because a lot of times students don't know what a career looks like until they go through the doors of that employer and see it happening or someone comes in and tells them exactly what a day in the life of that career looks like. So that's something that with the work-based learning growing, that is our goal to increase as well. Because we need to get all of these different careers in front of our students so they can see all of the opportunities that are out there. A lot of times we see our students come in and they're one track, they know exactly what they want to do and that's great. But I want them to see all the opportunities that are there before they make that decision of what they want to do for the rest of their life. So having people come in and sending our students to different workplaces is ultimately what our goal is. And that ultimately is what we need help with, with the community. Because we need those partnerships with the local businesses to be able to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Still have job players?
So we have, yes. With COVID and restrictions, we haven't had, been able to invite employers in, but as soon as we can, we will be. This year, we're doing something a little different, we're sending students out to employers for Job Shadowing Day, which gives students a one-day experience in a workplace to see exactly what happens in that workplace. And we've tried to partner students with employers that they want to go into so that they can see firsthand what that looks like.
You listed programming and one other computer skills, but are you, during your needs assessments, have they identified any other possible computer-related classes, health tests, support and so forth and so on?
So every year, we do a survey of our students to see what the interests are. And right now, we're still seeing the interest in medical careers. That's our highest need right now, which we do offer two different programs. One in-house, which is sports medicine, and then one at our bridging communities. But that right now is our biggest, our biggest thing. But we do see on those surveys, I want to say the last one we did maybe had a 10% need for some type of computer classes in-house. Yeah.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if I just make one final point, I think that last point might be where you find that synergy, okay? We talked about healthcare jobs. When the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission did a community survey years ago, one of the top reasons that people in high school were going to move out of the Middle Peninsula was because there were not enough jobs at the field they were going into, which by and large was healthcare. The number one reason that people over 65 were going to move out of the Middle Peninsula was because there wasn't not, there was insufficient access to healthcare. So we said, you know, all those years ago, well, we need to bring these two things together. We need to, you know, bring industry in to connect those people that are going into healthcare jobs, the people that are needing the healthcare and find the business opportunity there. So this is where I think us as a governing body can, can create that type of synergy because, you know, it's, we've got a lot of people that want to go into healthcare. We've got a lot of people that need healthcare. And not accepting, you know, a couple of medical facilities that we have, by and large, we're kind of a a dearth of being able to kind of provide these services at the scale that maybe we need. So this is an area where we need to focus on some, some of our development efforts is bringing in more and more capable healthcare providers for the community to employ our young people and to serve our aging population.
And finally, one more, can you describe briefly your funding, how this program is funded?
So we are funded through what we call Perkins. It is a grant funding that we go through every year, we have to fill out all of this information based on our local needs, which we're completing that local needs assessment for. But what is funded through Perkins is going to be all of our equipment to run these programs. CTSOs, which are student organizations within career and technical education. So I know you've heard of FFA and DECA. Those are also funded through the Perkins. And we also fund all of our professional development for teachers through that Perkins grant. So that's a state and federal grant that we apply for every year. We have an advisory committee that goes through and evaluates funds for that and evaluates the allocation of those funds. So if anybody is interested in, you know, joining in on that conversation, we do have three meetings a year, one in the fall and then two in the spring to go over those before we submit it to the state for approval.
Very good. Mr. Rose and Mr. Breeden, if you would perhaps ask some of your committees to have a liaison to, especially on the comp plan and maybe with the EDA, what you're doing with RKG to work with Ms. Langford and Mr. Borrego on the CTE. Appreciate it, thank you. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Very, very enlightened. Next up, we have Ms. Evie Stone with Hill Studio to talk about the comp plan update.
Thank you, it's a real pleasure to be here. I'll let her get my presentation on the screen. Well, maybe while she's doing that, I'll, I'll kind of do a little bit of an introduction here so that we won't waste any time. I am Evie Sloan and I am the Senior Planner for Hill Studio. And with me tonight is David Hill, who is President of Hill Studio. And I was the primary planner who compiled a lot of the information. And David is the landscape architect who, who really helped develop and pull together a lot of these initiatives that we're going to talk to you about tonight. But I want to be sure that David gets a lot of the design credit. So I think that that's what is really unique about the, the comprehensive plans that we do is that we not only provide the planning aspects of it, but we also work with you in terms of, of bringing it so that it can be a reality. Tonight, I am going to talk about the draft plan that we have written and that you all received. And I hope you've had it about, about a week or more. I know the Planning Commission has seen it probably far too long and they're ready to basically have it put to bed. But I'm not going to go over a lot of the presentation materials that we have done in the past. I think that those are still online. If people are interested, you can go to the county webpage. And we've had two other public presentations, one at the start of this project and one in July when we finished a workshop. And we've also had a presentation with, with this group before as well, where we presented market and demographic analysis data. So I'm not going to touch too much on that. What I want to go over tonight is the draft plan overview and in particular, the executive summary, the vision and goals, and the potential action projects. Also, the future of land use, the categories, the maps, and then what are the next steps in this project? Next slide. So we started this project in January of 2021. We have done project research, we've had public meetings, we've had stakeholder meetings. We have done a demographic and market analysis. We have had a public workshop to really look at some priority areas within the county that we felt that we needed to look at more intensely. And, and we are now at the draft comprehensive plan. So let me tell you a little bit about what is a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a guide, it is not a mandatory document, but is a guide for how you invest public dollars and, and how you manage land use and development in the future. And so it is typically a plan that has a window of about 10 to 20 years. And it is the basis for how you update your zoning and your subdivision tools and all of your land management tools. And it's also a basis for how you might want to develop your capital improvements plan for public facilities. So. So, and this is the second actual, the, the draft plan that you have in front of you today, which was dated the 31st of January, is actually a revised edition from a previous revision that we had done. The first revision went actually to the Planning Commission. There were a few modifications and some edits. And so what you have here is the second revision. Next slide. So again, let me review, we started in January of 21. We also did a community survey that is online, that is still active. At the present time, we have about 600 responses to that survey. And those responses that we have gotten from citizens have helped us with determining the vision for the county as well as the goals and some of the action projects and strategies that, that I'm going to share with you a little bit later. We've had two public meetings, one at the kickoff of this project and one midterm. We've also held a community design workshop. We've had hands-on discussions with stakeholders. And we have coordinated with a comprehensive plan committee that's through the Planning Commission. And then I believe this is either the second or the, I guess this is about the second work session that we've actually had with Board of Supervisors, EDA and Planning Commission. Next slide. So one of the things that I want to really stress is that a lot of times in doing a document, you want to provide an executive summary. And because people's attention span is pretty short. And so in the executive summary for this plan, you will see, it tells you in about five pages or so exactly the direction that the county is planning to go. It's the purpose of the plan, what is a comprehensive plan? It's got an overview of, about King William County. It's got a section on what is the vision of the county? What are the goals for the future? And you use those goals to be able to make decisions. And it actually also has a summary of some of the directions for the future and some of the key initiatives. So if anything, if you have a limited amount of time, please read the executive summary. I think it'll give you just about everything that you needed to know. So the directions and key, some of the key initiatives that I'm going to go over a little bit later are the rural landscape character of the county, growth in Central Garage, King William Courthouse Village, which is an initiative that we have, the Business Park Industrial Development. which is an initiative that we have, the business park, industrial development and modernized infrastructure in the county. And there is also a graphic that I'm going to go over about how the blueprint 2041 is organized. Next slide. So in terms of vision and goals, this vision statement was developed based upon the feedback that we got from all of the stakeholders and county officials that we interviewed as well as the public. And so I will go ahead and read that because I think it's important. In 2041, King William County will be a thriving, safe, friendly and caring community that exhibits extraordinary rural agricultural and natural landscapes and offers a peaceful country lifestyle for raising family. Outdoor recreational experiences abound for residents and visitors on the scenic rivers, state forestlands, public parks and private farms. Home to three of the oldest Native American tribes in the nation and a historic courthouse dating to circa 1725, King William County continues to celebrate and honor its unique heritage and preserve its character while effectively managing responsible community growth. The diverse economy of small businesses and tailored specialized industry contributes to the community prosperity, which is evident in affordable taxes, quality public services, distinguished educational system and a focused 21st century utility infrastructure. And then to implement that vision, you have a series of goals for 2041 that are discussed in that executive summary. And the goals relate to healthy and safe community and deal with things like quality life, smart plan growth, diversified housing, social well-being and quality recreational experiences. Another category is diverse balanced economy, which deals with sustained agriculture and diversified resilient economy. The third category is planned responsible infrastructure, which deals with 21st century facilities and infrastructure and responsible government governance. The category celebrated protected environmental and cultural resources, which deals with celebrated heritage and the rural environment. And then finally, the planned managed land development. So all of the goals basically set the stage for how you were going to plan for and manage land development and how you are going to to make wise decisions in public infrastructure. Next slide. So the plan contents and organization. So there's essentially five sections to the plan. There's an executive summary, which we've already gone over. There's a section on the community planning process that discusses all of the public meetings and what we heard from that public meeting, those public meetings and the public survey. Then there's a section on King William County and the region, which really talks about just the overall history of the county and the region, some of the regional influences and a discussion on demographic and economic trends for King William County in the region. And then there's the big part of the plan, which is the most in-depth, is the fourth section, which is the King William County today and tomorrow. And if you think about a comprehensive plan as being a large puzzle and within that puzzle, there are all these pieces like land use, utilities, housing, public services, parks and recreation and natural resources and historic, all those things basically have to be put together and linked together. And so that's in that fourth section. And then there's a section called implementing the plan. And essentially, once you know where it is that you want to go and the direction you're going in, it's kind of like, well, how do you get there? And so there are priority action projects that we have suggested. These are not mandatory projects, but these are the ones that in our work, we have suggested that you pursue these to achieve your vision and the goals for the future. And then there is also an implementation matrix, which is actually in the appendix. And it's like a checklist of all the things that basically the recommendations that have been discussed in the plan. And it helps you in terms of really monitoring where you will go. And I'll kind of talk about that a little bit later because I've got an example. Next slide. Okay, so now I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the priority action initiatives. Let me just preface this by saying, we have found that a long-range plan is important in a community, but it's important that it not just sit on the shelf. It's important that it be an action document and something that people use. And so we have found that if you can identify some key initiatives that get people excited and engage the community in wanting to further the growth of the community, that is very, very helpful and really making this a plan that stays active. Next slide. So this is a summary of some of the initiatives that we have suggested. And as you can see, there's a lot going on in the central garage area and the 360 corridor. So we have initiatives that recommend improvements in the 360 corridor. We recommend growth in the central garage area. We recommend some additional investment, both private and public for industry and business in one of the areas along 360. There's also a courthouse village concept that we have introduced for the King William Courthouse area. That is a nice area that is midway between West Point and Central Garage. So it makes sense that perhaps there can be some additional business investment there. The main thing is, is that the county as a whole is actually sustained agriculture and rural character. What we heard so many times from the community was, why do you like King William County? We like it because of the rural character, preserve the rural character. And I need to say that in order to preserve the rural character for a community, if you want to maintain that key asset, you have to have density and focus your growth in a particular area. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then there's also opportunities along the Pamunkey River and the Matapanai River for various outdoor recreation opportunities that can be great for not only residents, but also for visitors as well. Next slide. So let's talk about the rural corridor preservation along 360. So this is a gateway into King William County. And it's very important. This is the first impression for the county. And so what's very, what is very striking is that you have a lot of rural characteristics and vistas that you want to preserve. So it's very important that you really take care and how you manage development along that corridor. So at present, the county has a corridor overlay district, which really does help in terms of managing how development is sited along the corridor and what the characteristics are. And so that's great. But landscaping is a very important piece of this. So this exhibit that's actually in the comprehensive plan gives you some examples of how you might improve the landscape qualities along the corridor to make them more pleasing. Setbacks is also, are also very important as well as signage controls, especially temporary signage, I think, along the corridor sometimes can be a challenge. And it's very important too, that your entrances for all of your businesses are coordinated, that they are managed and not necessarily just 100 foot, 100 or 200 foot wide entrances into the corridor. Next slide. So Central Garage has been designated as the growth area and the county has been very has been very good at focusing growth there by adding the utilities in that area. One quadrant of the intersection is undeveloped right now. And that is especially key to the future of the central garage area. And so you can see in this exhibit, we actually have an architectural perspective of a type of development that is a mixed-use development that has a variety of different land uses and connected pedestrian places and businesses and housing. And so that quadrant is very important. We have also recommended, and I know that you have just improved the intersection at Route 30 and 360, and I think it's a great achievement. But you may want to consider, and if not, within the next 20 years, I think you need to at least think about it in terms and keep it on your radar screen, is a traffic roundabout for that intersection. It can be done in such a way that it can be a key destination and central place that provides you with a sense of place, landscaping, it can accommodate the various traffic. It can really move traffic through there, sometimes at a slower pace, but it is much more effective than the current intersection that you have now. And it can be a true asset for Central Garage. So if it doesn't happen, I realize that you just put in the intersection and I think that that's great, but I think keeping it on the radar screen is something that is well worth thinking about. Mixed uses in Central Garage are very important. What I mean by mixed uses is a combination of not just residential, but residential and commercial, so that you have a walkable community and that you have all the services and different kinds of housing and all those services within close proximity where you have your utilities connected. And of course, a big thing is going to be the amount of landscaping that is there, the amount of green space, shared public common areas. Next slide. So King William Courthouse Village, what we heard during our early discussions was that if you were in West Point, you had the ability to have services there. Or if you were in Central Garage, you had the ability for services. But if you were somewhere in between, there was an opportunity to maybe do something more where the administration and the courthouses were in the historic courthouse. So this area is very historic. It has archaeology assets that need to be protected, but there is a great opportunity to be able to have a new type of development that is between the administration building and the courthouse that can be some type of either an office campus or even an educational campus. I mean, I wouldn't rule necessarily that out. It might be a small educational campus, but it's still a type of campus that has additional support services. So for instance, if you need to go to lunch or you need to have a copy made or you need childcare or something like that, you don't necessarily have to drive for 20 minutes to be able to get it. You can get it in that particular area. It is an opportunity for something like a farmer's market. It's an opportunity to have public events there. And as I said, you might even want to consider a higher educational partner to consider maybe some kind of special programming dealing with agriculture and forestry or something like that. Next slide. So the King William Commerce Park redevelopment, and this is an example. This is not meant to say that the county is going to develop the commerce park. I have to say that. This is an example of how you can take a business park and really make it a great place for business and industry. And so key to that is really having a mixture of uses. So in this case, you've got a mixture of residential there at the very beginning along 360 and you also have some support business services within the park, including something like a daycare. You have a landscape entry corridor that goes from 360 in that has common street trees and green spaces. The siding of the buildings and the business operations are very important. You put a great street frontage on and then you put all of your storage and your parking, large parking areas and operations towards the back and hide them from view. And then in some really successful business parks, they even have connecting walks and trails. So if you live, I mean, if you work in a particular business park, maybe you take your lunch hour and you do a trail run or something. Next slide. And that commerce park could be a public and a private kind of a venture thing. It's not one of the other. Recreational opportunities, because of the two rivers and the great scenic areas that are in King William, there are great way to really enhance the recreational opportunities for the county. And this can be not only for residents, but also for visitors. In the upper left-hand corner is an example of how you might be able to expand the King William County recreational park to include some additional playgrounds, some trails and some additional fields. And I think there's some soccer fields and some ball fields. And I think there's even a mountain biking trail that someone drew in there. That's not necessarily just saying that those are the programs, but it's an example of how you can expand that park and really make it something great. And then down in the lower left-hand side is an example of where you might be able to add additional river access points for canoes or kayaks. And I think that those are listed as existing and where you might have new ones. Next slide. And remember that I said that in order for you to preserve the rural character of King William, you really must encourage density in particular areas. And then if you do have density in an agricultural area, it's very, very important that that be done in a very careful way. And so we did this example of an agricultural preservation subdivision, which really focuses on maintaining the agricultural qualities and and care of the land while also allowing some residential development on the fringes. It preserves the farmland and the vistas. And but what something like this would really need is that they do need updated standards in your planned unit development ordinance and also your cluster subdivision regulations. And so we have recommended that as part of our land use section and I'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. So the implementation matrix, this is what is in the appendix. And it is really just a checklist that identifies the goals for the future. And then it has various strategies listed under it with a recommended timeframe. And I have to stress that these are recommended timeframes. This is not a mandate. This is a guide. And it's a long list. And so obviously this is continuously changing depending on where your emphasis needs to be. I also have to point out that there are partners listed in the right-hand side. And partners are essential to making this plan and the items in this list come to fruition. Because there's not enough county staff, there's not enough county money. And so you really need those need those community partners to be able to make this plan a reality for King William County. Next slide. So the other appendix that is included in the plan is a demographic and market assessment that was done last July, and it includes a demographic overview, market segmentation, which is kind of helpful for businesses in understanding what their markets are and maybe some of the people, types of people that they may want to reach out to. It's got some information on housing, employment, the commercial market. He did update it to include some additional items on tourism, and then there are some recommendations in there. So we have had a thorough discussion of this particular appendix, I think back in July. And so there's been some tweaks to that, and I know that the tourism section has been added. Next slide. And so some of the key categories for really perhaps growing opportunities in King William County are those in general merchandise, in restaurants, in eating places, grocery stores, home centers, clothing stores, health and personal care. And then I think that tourism, there's an opportunity for tourism as well. Next slide. So future land use. So the future land use discussed in this plan and the map that goes along with it is very, very much key to the whole implementation of the comprehensive plan. It actually focuses the strategies. It helps you manage how the county should grow in terms of the future land use. Next slide. So one map that I found particularly interesting, and I think this is one thing that really is an asset, a tremendous asset for King William County, but it's also a little bit of a constraint in terms of development. So you'll see the prime farmland is shown in the green, and then the blue are all the areas that are related to Chesapeake Bay protection areas. It's the entire county. I mean, so essentially, that is, that's an asset for you, and you need to carefully manage your land use in the future to be able to retain that asset, retain that rural character, and yet grow. So we'll talk about how that, how the future land use map works with that. Next slide. So one of the things that we recognize as we really became more familiar with the county is that there were certain landscape character that was visible in three different districts within the county. And we just kind of named these, and the names kind of stuck. But anyway, the Mango Hick area is really King's Forest. The Crossing is the Central Garage area and the Route 360 corridor. And then the Legacy area really goes, it's King William Courthouse all the way down to West Point and just to the east of Central Garage. So there's three distinct character districts, and I'll show you some, the next couple of slides show you what some of that character looks like. So next slide. So in King's Forest, it's more hilly, it's more forested, it's very rural, has a distinct character to it. Next slide. The Crossing, 360, a lot of businesses on either side, but yet some rural landscapes. The next slide. And then the Legacy, you have these grand farms with these beautiful farmhouses that are well, well set back from the road with these enormous fields in front of them with forest as well. And so you can see that there's three different characters. And so what we tried to do was really take and develop the land use and some of the policies for how you manage land and kind of focus it in those areas. Next slide. Oh, West Point, I forgot West Point. West Point is your real settled town. Next slide. Okay, so we came up with about, and I haven't counted those up, I guess there's about eight future land use categories. And they range from agriculture and conservation to a designated growth development area, which we'll talk about. Then you have a low-density rural residential kind of area, a medium-density residential area, a mixed-use planned unit development area, community business, which is like your corner country store. You've got your corridor business, which is like Route 360, and then you've got your corporate business and industrial, which is like the industrial park or the commerce park. Next slide. So essentially, this is the future land use map. It is a draft, and the planning commission is actually tweaking this on a daily basis. And you can see that most of the county is actually in agriculture conservation. Think back to that prime agricultural land in the Chesapeake Bay Act, Chesapeake Bay management areas. Central Garage is shown here as a growth area with 360 having most of the corridor business. The medium-density residential is kind of in the gold or the lighter orange, which is connected with where you either have existing utilities or where you will be expanding utilities. And then there are a few parcels that are kind of a darker orange that we have designated a mixed-use land use category. And that is intended to really provide for better quality growth and some better quality development that is a mixture of residential and commercial and connected communities. Next slide. Actually, this is, I should have probably advanced this one. This is a more zoomed-in area of the area around Central Garage that basically has identified the development or rural residential in the yellow, medium-density residential in the light orange, mixed-use development in the orange, and commercial development in the red, and industrial development in the purple. And I need to say too, before we advance to the next slide, the future land use map, again, is a guide. It is not a mandate that says you have to develop this parcel in this way. The planning commission can adjust that map and recommend to the board of supervisors that map be adjusted. But again, it is a guide for how you manage growth in the future. Next slide. So what are our next steps? As I said, the planning commission is refining the future land use map. We will be tweaking some additional comments on the draft plan. If you have any comments on the plan, I would encourage you to probably send them to Sherri Graham, the planning director, and she'll be sure that I get whatever comments you have and will respond to those. We have a public meeting scheduled for March the 10th, I believe, and they will be advertising for that. And they also have copies of this current draft plan in the public libraries and in the public libraries. And then, of course, after the public meeting, we will get additional comments from stakeholders, consider those. And then the next step is to actually set an official public hearing before the planning commission and the board of supervisors to adopt the plan. So with that, I'll ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, if you could please put your caps on.
Just looking at this, the last slide, you had rural residential development. You had it around Central Garage. And then the rest of it was agricultural conservation. I mean, y'all are looking at the rural residential not happening way out in the fields, I call it, and away from the central density area.
I think it's limited subdivisions out in the agricultural. Yeah. When we refer to rural residential, it is more subdivision development, but subdivisions that are of a lower number. You still are going to have rural residential development out in the agricultural areas. It's just that if you have a low-density subdivision, it's best to put it where you have the utilities and where you have the services available. So it's a matter of saying, well, if you want to do like a 10, 10-lot subdivision or 20-lot subdivision, 15-lot subdivision, you might put it in the rural residential area. Whereas if you had, if you were going to do a 50-lot subdivision or 100-lot subdivision, you might want that in the medium-density residential area.
And one other thought I had, looking at this presentation, in the Central Garage area, you, I didn't quite envision the Central Garage area. You show it, you show right there in the crossroads, you foresee hotels and hotels in that area. I didn't see it that way myself. I can't envision a Holiday Inn at the corner of that.
I think you've got a great, you don't have any lodging in the county. When I come, when I come, I have to stay in Richmond. I mean, and that's money that's going to another community. But no, I think that you've got a great opportunity for a hotel. Now, is it a hotel that's going to be 200 rooms? No, it's probably maybe a smaller boutique hotel that may have maybe 35 rooms or less than 50 rooms. But yeah, I think you have a great opportunity to be able to have a hotel. And in fact, I think one of the recommendations from The Economist was that you really investigate that further, and a lot of communities are doing that. I know that one county that I worked with, Brunswick County, actually went and solicited a hotel developer. And you know, it's not just any hotel developer. I mean, there may be a particular type of hotel developer that you want to really think about. I mean, there are some boutique-type hotels that may really fit King William well. But especially if you're going to focus on increased tourism and just really to stay up to date, I think, yes, a hotel is very appropriate.
I just have all kinds of visualized it. But I guess, and this is only for 2041?
Well, it's between now and 2041. I mean, hopefully by 2041, you would have, yeah, hopefully in the next 20 years, you could have that.
And one more thing, if I may add, Presley Farm, that's at the entrance.
It's a great, it's a great entrance.
I mean, I see that as a landmark in this county, having a hard time getting somebody to do something with it. Where do you see that in connection with the entranceway? I might see a hotel right there of some sort, a nice restaurant kind of, that's one, it's a restaurant. But what do you envision?
I think it's one of the most exceptional entrances into a community that I have really seen in recent years. I mean, it's especially the, just the styling of it and the color is just really striking. I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's a great entrance. I don't know about the internal use. I think that you could probably make it some type of a restaurant or a brewery or something. I don't know what some of the issues are with the building itself. A lot of times, those older buildings have some issues. But what you could do as a county is maybe work with the property owner to really talk about how important it is as a gateway entrance and that you may want to work with him to try to find a buyer or a user. I mean, I guess what I would start with is probably some kind of an architectural study of the building conditions and some options for how the building might be used. And then from there, solicit, solicit, you know, a developer or a business to go in there.
If I could, that building was renovated, what, maybe 15 years or so ago? And we did have a brewery that was, I mean, what was it, Dragon Run? I don't know which one. But anyway, they got in there and structurally to do what they wanted to do, it wasn't going to happen. And I think it would be a good site for a farmer's market, myself, and actually
Inside?
You could keep the building close to its natural state. And it is a landmark. Those days when I was working those long hours, it was a welcome site coming out. One other question, your expansion of Parks and Rec, is that going to be able to be done without the purchase of additional property?
It is a concept. No, it does include some additional property. And so that would be the county's consideration, whether you wanted to expand that and be able to, we're not suggesting that you purchase additional property, and the plan is not saying that the county will do that. This is a concept for how you might expand the park.
I'm also on the Parks and Rec Commission, and we've picked around the idea of having a satellite Parks and Rec more centrally located. I think in this general area, I think it would be something really good because the people in West Point, if they want to participate in our Parks and Rec, they have a very long way to come. And we do have additional land directly across from here. I don't know the contour of it or whether it would be acceptable. Anyways, and also Parks and Rec, maybe the possibility of amplification in the future.
These are all things, Mr. Garber, I would suggest that you put this together in a recommendation package and float it to the planning commission. There are endless ideas that can factor into this.
The planning commission has beat this thing to death over the past several months. The whole purpose, my mind of tonight going forward is you folks, and you folks, and everybody in the county weighing in and saying what you like, what you'd like to see different. So yes, I'd like to turn it more outward in writing and send it to Sherri. We'll make sure that you get some.
All right.
There was this very small color, I think on, one of the big land use maps, I think it's called rural commercial. And there was a small piece of that in the western part of the county, a small piece of it in Central Garage, maybe a little bit closer down here. That seems to kind of, or in my mind, that might mimic what we're hearing from the economic development consultant that we're working with, doing some deeper industry analysis. Now, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about what rural commercial is?
Well, rural commercial for, in the, as with respect to the future land use map, was dealing with your corner grocery stores. You know, you're like the Exxon station on Route 30 before you get to King William, or one of the mom-pop grocery stores, just places that have popped up over the years out of necessity. Yeah. But yeah, we have not identified any additional industrial areas or anything like that. And I think that that's one of the things that the planning commission is interested in hearing from EDA. So if your consultant had some recommendations, I think that they need to come forward. I think that they need to come forward with, with some of that. For the most part, we have been really focusing on just trying to preserve as much of the rural character as we can and, and preserving that agricultural history of the county, um focusing growth in Central Garage because that's where you're going to have the subdivision development. And, and I need to, to say this too, in terms of subdivisions, subdivisions do not pay the bills. And so for growth in King William County, it is essential that you have balanced growth that is both residential and the business and support facilities that actually can either come together in a planned unit development or focus because um residential subdivisions is not going to get you the direction that you want in the future.
So, if you could, um, one of the things you said is that it's important uh, uh, to, to keep things dense, density is important to meeting some of the objectives we have. And, and then you talked about Commerce Park. Is there currently demand? Do you see, I mean, like, well, what demand do you see for businesses? What type of businesses would, would you propose for Commerce Park?
Um, one of the, in terms of our net Maldrose analysis, they looked at primarily retail business. They did not look at like industrial sector business. And I, so we have recommended that you really look at what some of those industrial sectors might be um as, and I'm, I'm hoping that your consultant, R, RKG, will, will look at that. But I think that there's probably, uh, and I don't know what the demand is, but I think that there's probably demand for small warehousing and different kinds of, of um maybe small manufacturing.
So you're, um, there, there's a disconnect somewhere between, I mean, this, your, this, this document says, as summarized in the chart below, the retail leakage analysis indicates that there is significant demand in King William County, right? And, and air, air, and now air, the work that we've gotten suggests otherwise.
And, and you mentioned that to me, and I'll be happy to talk with them about that.
Where I was going is that if there have been assumptions made on demand that have influenced the way this has unfolded, then I've got, I mean, just from an economic standpoint, I'd just point out that um, that's not insignificant.
And I think there, there's a subsequent conversation that you had about the retail assumptions, I think, in here and kind of over here. But I think more to the point, I think you said it, your instinct is what we are hearing, that there is demand um in the transportation and warehousing sector specifically. But I think what, what we're, what I'm anticipating of here after the first presentation we had last week is that the opportunities geographically that we should focus on for warehousing and transportation are in the mangahack western part of the county due to its proximity to Route ninety-five. Um, and not so much on three sixty quarter because there are kind of access to population centers and other things that are not there. So I think what, what, what we're beginning to hear is that the core industries that we should be focused on to attract and develop enterprises is warehousing and transportation, it's of course forestry and ag, light manufacturing, um, and maybe getting into some of this recreation tourism stuff. But then another strong thing to focus back on the previous conversation that we're having with the CTE folks is this healthcare and what we can do in that space to try to attract and, and grow new business. But I think, when, when we think about where stuff goes, and I think that's what we're going to find out in March, um, is that most of the, the, the businesses that we think are going to do the best of the industry verticals that we think are going to thrive here are going to be probably more focused in the mangahack area. Uh, with the retail center, of course, being in Central Garage. But I think our analysis is going to be that there's not a whole lot of um opportunity there.
So, so just to, to try to put a finer point on it, the um, the assumption that, as I read in this report, is that there is leakage of.
Retail.
Right, of a hundred and seventy million. This report assumes that it's captured, all of it's captured. And Aaron worked with RKG and said that we should anticipate a twenty percent recapture.
No, they, the report that, that they, you've got a one hundred and seventy million dollars worth of money that's going outside of the county. You are not going to be able to recapture all one hundred and seventy million. You're only going to recapture a certain percentage of that.
But this, right, and, and so um, what we've gotten is that like twenty percent is, is, is conservative, forty percent will be pretty aggressive. And that when you stack that up next to what a grocery would require or the kinds of space that a restaurant requires, a restaurant typically would be five thousand square feet based on the information we've gotten. And so when you, when you connect the dot, dots between the retail leakage associated with restaurants and air recapture rate, we're looking at like two to four restaurants that are, would be currently supported in today's market. And that's the only use that will be supported with today's demand. And, and RKG want to step further to say, that's why it's so important to concentrate everything in Central Garage. So that, so that if, if you have houses that are built out in Mangahack, they may go to Bowling Creek to go shop at, that doesn't help us. So you've got to concentrate them and keep them tight. And, and then went on to say that one and two acre lots is, is not a good utilization. It needs to be really dense, so.
Another thing I think we can't overlook is the fact that um, we also have a significant leakage of commuters into Richmond and other places for work. So that contributes a lot to our retail leakage because how often we stop by the grocery store on the way home and it's not the one that's Central Garage. A lot of our, a lot of the commuters don't even go that far.
And then those are sticky dollars, right? They're hard to get back.
They, they are. Um, so that's why I think the presentation from earlier with the, the, the joint um, uh, venture with the, with the school systems and the, the trade programs and so forth is important because if you can, if you can get the industries in King William County to go to the county first to, for, to fill positions, then you keep people working here and they will work here, they will live here, and they will spend here. And that's, that's what we need for that to happen. Uh, so it's a definitely a, you know, like years going on at one time, but it's still, it needs to happen.
And so RKG uh went, went on to say that, that their target is likely going to be uh businesses with fifty or fewer employees. But that's, that's kind of their sweet spot. And, and there was an emphasis on ag and, and, and ag related businesses. One of the opportunities that we kind of teased out in our meeting Wednesday is, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to bring like a meat processor here, right? Pull from all kinds of counties, right? But those are the kinds of things that we're going to need to identify and to go chase. And so RKG is, uh, we're on track to end up with, you know, specific actionable things that we can go out and, and, and come together, you know, like go make that one thing happen and then do another and another. But it ties back to what Jay said, we need to have the plan configured in a way that we can actually like go get a meat processor and put it in place. It doesn't, that doesn't need to be in Central Garage, that needs to be closer to ninety-five. And so it's just, um.
I, I, I think it, I think it's key, you all have identified various industrial and commercial opportunities you see coming. The future land use map should reflect what you all have identified. It'd be totally candid with you, I had not thought at all of anything uh industrial out in Mangahack. Um, so, so where would y'all propose that be? Uh, if there's a landowner that would, that, that would like to rezone his land uh to reflect that, it's something that if on the future land use map, we go, yes, this is mom and apple pie. If you, here she wants to do it, and the more ready it can be, the easier just to attract people rather than say, oh, I have to rezone this land. I'm going to go someplace whilst we're already at the only manager.
Well, Mr. Mr. Brean and Mr. Rose, have you perhaps considered having a joint planning EDA? It sounds like it's.
We should, as much communication as we can do is, is better, right, for, for all of us. And, and so we can, we can all get this moved.
We agree with it for both of them. I mean, we could try to do the, the March meeting, where RKG is going to come back with some additional recommendations.
Why don't you guys come join us for that? That's a great idea. Right, but, and so one of the things that, that, one of the things RKG said in the last meeting is that, you know, you're sort of, you, you've got some transportation opportunities, but there are counties around you that have better transportation opportunities. And so if you can connect something back to the ag and to the timber, right, that, right, then, then suddenly being on an interstate doesn't matter so much, right? So we've got some work to do, it's, it's, it's important while we're all here. Yeah. So I'm going to thank you, that didn't mean to hide you, for sure.
That's great. Do we have a, a cutoff for comments? I've got four pages I've been working on, and do you have a cutoff, Ms. Graham? Is that?
We've got the public meeting on the tenth. Um, and so that, the graph that's out there now is the one that you have. Um, I would hope that we would get comments um about two weeks, by the end of March, maybe? By the end of March, because I'd like to wrap it up in terms of final and then actually get it to the Planning Commission and, and to you all for, for public hearing. Um, certainly, we know that the future land use map is being tweaked um quite a bit. So I mean, it's very, this discussion falls in line with that. Um, I have not seen the RKG presentation, but I will look at that and see if I can't um incorporate certain pieces of that in the, the final, in the draft plan. So, because I think it needs to all be, all be on kind of the same page. Um, it's kind of unfortunate that, that, that's kind of following ours, but it's still, it's still, I think, very good, especially if you're looking at industrial sector and sectors.
So Chris has put up uh, uh, on the county web, the Zoom meeting, a link to the, to the video. And it's, it's worth going and seeing. We had some great dialogue. It should, oh, it was a half hour presentation?
And, and I think to your point, it was meant to be additive to what y'all were doing. So I think that the, the additional leakage analysis that was incorporated into the RKG study took your, your numbers and just did some more work with them.
Okay.
So I think that what, what you'll come back with again is, 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 I think it's actually, then I thought it was a goal um in your implementation plan, who's actually got a pretty good jump on, on what you already.
So you've already got, but you're already one step ahead.
Just the landscaping features that you added in was great. I knew, come into the county, you know, just have a great look, you know, just put your best foot forward. Like, I understand, like, welcome to King William, what we have now. You know, anything beyond that could be like a corporate sponsor. When you look at Alit and you look at like doing a sidewalk, uh, how do other counties or other projects you've worked on paint for certain items like that? Because I know in the study, Alit has the river, eventually be a brewery. People stay at the hotel, they go to multiple breweries slash winery. So it, it could really bring a, just a really cool little actual downtown to the county. So how would sidewalking and landscaping, how something like that could be for?
A lot of rural and small towns um actually get funding through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, and, um, and it's usually, they consider the downtown revitalization plan. So for instance, West Point received a lot of its funding probably from DHCD. Now, Alit is more of a community, it's not really a downtown. Um, I don't, I don't know whether they would consider it eligible, maybe, maybe, um.
I have a question about that, so.
I, I have to, I really have to think about it, you know, it's, um, it, it may be, I don't know. David, do you have another suggestion?
Yeah, both, both the landscaping or the, in the small village sidewalk could be uh, V dot.
Oh, okay, so V dot as well.
So, so how, how dense is that development? Uh, so, and so just to kind of lay it out, so uh, in Alexandria, for instance, right? They, they've determined, in Fairfax, they've determined that if the walk is longer than twelve hundred feet, it starts to fall off, people stop, you know, there, there's no benefit. And they tie that to, to a metro, to metro stations, right? So if you're further than twelve hundred feet, they don't, you're, you're not in the metro zone because people don't typically walk much further than that. And, and so what, how dense is the, is the development that you're talking about? Where we have all these suburbs?
Um, if you look in the future land use section, there's a table, and you can look in the medium density residential, and it's got some, some density, so many, so many units per acre. Now, it, I don't think that King William is ready for Fairfax or Alexandria in terms of their density. Um, I think that the discussion that I have in the land use section right now is six to twelve dwelling units per acre, which I think, or maybe it might be as high as eighteen. But I think probably six to twelve dwelling units per acre um is probably right for King William. I wouldn't go much higher than that, at least for right now. But it's not just the dense, I mean, you've got the density, but it's also the amenities and how you lay it out and how you develop it that is so important. So, um, you know, having those connecting trails, having those sidewalks, having that nice space might be why you can have a set of townhouses together that are really dense that people want to live in as opposed to having twelve townhouses that just space on a parking lot.
Well, it's focused on the mixed use, right, and sidewalks and so, right? And so to think that somebody's going to walk a mile to, to, to go, I, I just, if you're into, into, into a walk, okay, but it's, it, it, at some point it becomes the sidewalks, um, they're, um, the use begins to drop off as distance increases.
Oh, I don't know, David, do you have any kind of a metric or something about sidewalk?
So, a lot of planners universally use the, 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 a walk from the house for a half mile, up there, and down one mile, like it's on a rest. And uh, oh, oh, in, in transit, it's a five minute walk, a ten minute walk, right? And so, and, and in Arlington, in, in, you know, the subway stops are, you know, the twelve hundred feet is reasonable because that's as far as you're going to walk. You know, so the subway is going to work in, in more rural areas that, 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 that the plane might come in. But still, we're not interested in building miles and miles and miles of sidewalks that nobody put here, right? So if, if we get into this a little bit more detail, we'll start to develop some of these walking circles and some of these Beltline districts within uh these, so that, so they're compact, walkable uh, in the area around uh each of these places. Uh, for example, the ones that are more easily understood, I mean, West Point is great because you can walk all around. West Point feels just about right, right? Or the uh, Alit is another, you know, it's a very nice small walk. You can walk one hand or the other in just a few minutes. But, and even the one that we're thinking of around here, around the courthouse, the administration, it was a walkable place. If you look at the, the one in Central Garage, what it's drawing out, it might have, say, three or four different uh walkable districts that, that might, uh, play into that. But um, anyway, it, it really is based on, you know, what people could comfortably, pleasantly walk, you know, ten, ten or sort of uh, you know, like, uh, like college.
Is there an opportunity to create a, a, a strong node in Sharon Road in that area there?
That's where the school is.
Yeah, that's the thing, the school, the school area, the thing, where you play this department off, that, right? Yeah.
I think sidewalks and trails and how people use them now is changing dramatically over the last couple of years. I mean, I walk a mile every day just in my neighborhood, I'm taking a loop. And I think people, people enjoy getting outdoors. And so you, you can't really say that I'm not, I, I'll only walk if it's like half a mile because it's, it's recreational as well as scenic and, and, and maybe people just want to walk to a restaurant rather than getting in the car and, and doing it. And I think that that's what we kind of had in mind for the area around Central Garage. And if you um look at those lane use maps, um, I think it's really the. And if you look at those lane use maps, I think it's really the area that's a, that's a circle. That's the orange, it's the orange area, which is in the quadrant, the quadrant of the Route 30 and 360. The, it's the orange, big orange, this area here.
We're not helping you walk one and one, three sixty, eleven, ten and one, throughout there. We're talking about sidewalks within these. The positional nature of the development, where you've got mixed uses, where you've got type of, type of sidewalks and parkings within the community. Those types of things. Not talking about our development areas, but at the same time, you're talking about areas that, that a lot of traffic, talk about that precincts and, and make that community. Really have a destination for people to count, or people can live, work in place in that kind of general community.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to take up the entire area marked, marked in orange. But if you're going to put it somewhere, those are the areas that you so far tentatively identified as places you might do that. Are there others that are better than those?
Gentlemen, we, we're getting pretty far down in the weeds here. I think it would be a great opportunity for your joint meeting to, to discuss all of these. It's great ideas, but maybe not tonight.
You brought us out here on Valentine Day.
We've got another hour, we've got another hour at least, if you want to stick around.
I would like to ask, can we special even get, where, the primary community, I just said that. Do that again.
Absolutely. So, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I think it's a great idea. Any, any other lingering questions from anyone? Ms. Sloan, Mr. Hill, we appreciate seeing you again for the information.
I would.
Move to a German EDA. Sorry. I moved to a German EDA. All the favor. All those.
You're welcome to stay. But otherwise, I do enjoy your fortune on Valentine's Day. Next up, Mr. Sanderson.
Good for cutting it this morning.
Mr. Sanderson, I hope you have some magic solutions for us this evening. This is daunting.
There's some, I'm assuming you've already looked at it then. Um, good evening. If you're, if you're ready for me to proceed with chairman, again, Jimmy Sanderson with that important company, financial advisor to, to the county. I've got a, a presentation that we can walk through. Sounds like some of you may have already looked at it. I'm happy to stop anytime and we can, we can talk through everything you want. But, but just flip to the next page. Uh, we did have, we met, obviously, within the last year. The schools have identified a number of critical sort of capital projects that they have over the next, next several years. We had a chance to sit down and talk with them, in particular about the timing of those projects, and identified what they were looking to the, the board in particular to help finance. Uh, and so what we want to really demonstrate to you over the next several slides is really with the impact that that might be, given some assumptions related to the timing and the cost of those projects and, and frankly, the interest rates that are in the market right now and in the future. Hey, flip to the next page. We've identified here just sort of that by category, broad category of the, the projects that have been identified. Total is about 16 million in project costs, and facilities and equipment, high school athletics, vehicles and technology. And these are the fiscal years the school, school board has them sort of programmed in. You flip to the next slide. I do want to give you a little bit of sense of the, the breakout here on what the schools have identified that they're looking to, the, the county side to help, uh, help finance. It's about 10 and a half million, just north of that, of capital projects. They've identified some grant funding potentially, as well as some school system reserves that can pay for a little over five and a half million of these, of these future costs. I'll flip to the next page. So we break down that 10.6 million into specific projects that the, the schools have, have identified. And again, they went into some detail with you about what these were specifically, and you probably know better than I do what they are. But we've identified them on, on the left, really by the schools and other, uh, general areas and some description. But then again, we've identified where those financing, uh, projects would fall. And then again, this is about fiscal year, so 23 is, is about five million in costs, 1.5 million in 24, just north of four million in 25. Again, total is at 10.6. One, um, uh, point I do want to make, obviously here, is the, uh, the Hammond Homes Middle School HVAC, about 1.3 billion. They're, they're looking to try to fund that through some HVAC grants and some additional school, uh, school funds. So put a little bit of a pin in that one. School, they're trying to find a way to fund that outside of what they're, what they're asking you to do. Jump to the next page. Here's your existing debt, both counties and schools, and sort of rolled them all together for you in one place. And, and you can see here that our, our debt service overall steps up a little bit from where we are. The first bar there is FY22, which is what we're in now. So FY23 is what you're planning for in your, your upcoming budget. Pretty similar, a little bit of a, a jump up, not much. There is a, is a, uh, jump up in FY24, about $300,000 or so. And then overall, the, the county's debt service goes down. I wanted to break it out for you a little bit more on counties or county side, uh, projects versus school projects. Because the way you're, you're funding of these projects is a little bit different than some jurisdictions where you have some funds that go directly to, to schools. So next page, please. Again, just the county side. And you can see here, your debt service, about 1.4 million in the current budget for county only debt service, and it steps up over the next few years. And then it drops off pretty dramatically. I mean, you're, you're, you have no more debt service related to the county side after 20, 2030. It's pretty small that year, too. So, um, if you look at it for all intents and purposes, beginning in 29 and 30, are really the last years of the county's, uh, county side of debt. And that's not uncommon for, for smaller jurisdictions that sort of take on projects here and there as opposed to some larger jurisdictions that are borrowing on an annual basis where they're continually to add their debt service. You, you and other smaller jurisdictions tend to have some time between projects. So you pay them down and then you'll add a new borrowing when you need to. The next slide on the school side, um, this, this was kind of interesting. Their debt service drops, uh, in a, in a few years by a few hundred thousand dollars, almost $400,000 when you get out to, um, uh, 2025 versus, uh, the current budget that you have in FY22. And then it's pretty level, uh, slightly going down out to 20, 2038. So one of the things that we wanted to look at was how, uh, your ability to add some debt to the existing school's debt, uh, may be able to do that a little bit more of a strategic way to sort of fill in those gaps a little bit, where you've got the debt sort of dropping down. So if you'll see it here in a minute, I want you to add to that debt service and see where we're going to go above through your current budget of FY22 with respect to the school's debt service. The next slide, I want to give you a sense of the interest rates, um, that we, we've got here. Again, generally speaking, rates are still in a very good place, uh, from, from a borrowing perspective. We absolutely, though, have seen here very recently some, some pressure upwards on interest rates. You've probably seen it, the Fed's talking about raising short-term rates. We've been expecting that this year. Generally, again, this is on the short term, uh, but there has been a lot of talk back and forth about some acceleration of that, uh, and really how quickly they're ramping it up. And maybe they're going to be doing it a little bit more quickly than people thought. The markets don't really like uncertainty. And so when they sort of got some of those headwinds, uh, we saw short-term rates rise pretty dramatically. You may see in the papers, on TV, people talk about the 10-year treasury rate. That went from at the end of last year, where it got down into the 130 range, uh, moved up to around the 150. It's up by 2% now. So in the grand scheme of things, 2% 10-year rate's not a, not a bad interest rate. But when that has been, you know, at 1% or, or right around that range, it is a, is a large move up in rates. The difference between the 10-year and the 30-year treasury is only about 50 basis points. So from 2%, maybe 2.5% on a 30-year range. So it's pretty flat, uh, but we are seeing short-term rates rise. You would expect at some point to start to see all of the interest rates start to move up as well, too. So you'll see in our assumptions, we've made, uh, some assumptions about sort of a, a shorter term borrowing and then use higher rates, uh, for, for borrowing that might be out there a little bit further.
Does inflation factor at all into this?
So absolutely, inflation's playing into it. Frankly, the, the issue with Ukraine is playing into it. I think it's, inflation's the reason why the Fed is, is saying we need to raise short-term rates. That's, the, the point of that is to try to slow down that inflation some. So the, the, uh, inflation report that came out in, uh, January, mid-January, said it showed a 7.5% inflation rate, which was the highest I think it's been since 1980, so over 40 years. That put a bit of a, um, bit of a spook in the market. And we saw interest rates rise with the expectation that then the Fed may move a little bit more quickly and a little bit more dramatically to raise rates faster. This next slide, here's the, the assumptions that you'll see in the next few pages. So we, we've assumed that you're going to fund these over time. Uh, we're not going to borrow for everything right away, uh, but we're going to try to space it out a little bit to give us a little, some relief. We've assumed we borrowed through, uh, the Virginia Public School Authority, which is a vehicle that a lot of counties and cities use in Virginia. It's a state-run program based off of the credit of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we get really good interest rates when we go through, uh, VPSA. That's not the only borrowing opportunity that you have. They go into the markets twice a year, in the spring and the fall. Uh, and we've done it with the county before, where you've had needs, uh, between those. We can go out and borrow, uh, just based off the county's credit, uh, in the markets from banks if we want to between those borrowings. But, but again, for this purpose, we're going to assume VPSA. We've assumed that we're funding in the spring of '22. So, uh, in the, the current VPSA application process, $5 million worth of HVAC projects, um, for your elementary school. In the spring of '23, we, again, are borrowing to fund just north of 1.5 million of, of projects, again, for the, the treatment plant there and the track, uh, replacement and repair. And then the spring of '24, uh, just north of four million of project costs. That's HVAC and roofs and the, and the bus garage. Now, again, these may, these may move in time, they may slide, uh, some other things may come up. But so I want you to think of this in particular, what the impact of what we're looking at, um, with, with respect to the spring of '22 and those other projects, again, we, we fit them in as the, the schools have suggested are a good time to do them. We're trying to do them in the spring so that you can do it, do the projects in the summer when the kids are gone from the school, I suspect. From an interest rate and, and amortization perspective, we've assumed 20-year borrowings of level debt service. A little minor restructuring that you'll see in a minute for the FY, or for the 2022 borrowing. Interest rates that we've assumed are current market for the '22 borrowing. So again, we're, we're looking at, um, if, if you want to move forward with it, VPSA has got a program right now that'll have markets, uh, be in the market here in the next few months, uh, and try to lock in those rates. And then you'll see, we assumed a 4% interest rate for the '23 and '24 borrowing. So a big jump in the cost of funds between now and our assumptions with respect to '20, '23, '24, where those may end up. I'd rather be a little bit more conservative than, uh, aggressive. So we've used a, a bit of a higher interest rate there. Flip to the next, next slide. And so this is just the '22 borrowing added on top of your existing school debt service. So, um, you can see here, um, we've added, first problem is the existing debt service by fiscal year. Uh, and then we've added the '22 debt service, again, based off of the assumption of what the current market is. And we structured it a little bit, but those first two years are interest only. So we're, we're not paying off any principal in the first two years. And then we have level debt service, uh, out for 18 years. So we still kept it within a 20-year period. But we did interest only for two years because your debt service drops off after the next two fiscal years. So where you see over on the far right, what we've shown, uh, in red or green, is the difference between the, the total debt service with the '22 debt versus your current year's budget's debt service. So '22, uh, FY22, we had, you know, a million five, almost a million six of debt service for schools. Uh, and if you compare that to where you would be if we did the, a borrowing for $5 million of project costs in FY23, add a $1,660,000, it's, it's an addition of $100,000. So in the following year, it's an addition of $130,000. And then their debt service drops off. So you could add $5 million of projects, fund $5 million of projects with about a $200, $250,000 that you'd need to come up with of additional revenue in FY23 and '24. So where that money comes from, it can come from lots of places. It can come from budget cuts, it can come from growth, this growth in the, in the county. It could come from, uh, reserves and just sort of pay off those, those spikes. But then their existing debt service drops. And so what we've done is then added in behind it and leveled debt service. You'll see where those, uh, numbers start to turn green, 71,025. That's because the resulting debt service, even adding this $5 million in FY25, is still lower than your current budgeted debt service in FY22. So that works out, um, from, from our perspective, I think that works out pretty well for you. That you could, that you could add those projects in there. And really, the only impact is, you know, is less than $300,000 or so, uh, over the next two fiscal years that you'd need to come up with. The next page, we added in the, all of the, the other, uh, bonds as well. Again, there, we've assumed sort of the same process next year, uh, in the spring, we're having the same conversation. We're looking at what the, uh, what the schools have, have, have on, on, in line. And maybe we fine-tuned a little bit, but again, we're assuming here about a little north of a million or so of borrowing for projects. We've layered in the debt service beginning in, uh, '24, a little bit of interest only there. And then it's the level, uh, debt service of about $125,000 a year. And then we did the same thing for 2024. So the following year, we're borrowing, that was a larger borrowing, 4.2 million. That year, again, same thing, interest, uh, only in '25. And then '26, uh, through '45 is leveled debt service, again, just north of, uh, $300,000 a year. You'll see when you move to the right, there's much, much more red, uh, numbers there than there, there were, uh, with this respect to the, to the '22 borrowing. So again, here's where you're seeing your, your, really, your, uh, budget impact is going to be much greater going forward. You can see it graphically, uh, on the far right. So, um, you know, you're, you're looking at an additional 100 to, and it smacks capacity about, uh, 329,000, 325,000 of additional revenue that you would need to fund all of these projects, based on, you know, 20-year borrowing for each of them. That, again, these, these latter two are at about 4% interest rate, uh, to the, to the county. The next slide gives you, um, a little bit of a timeframe. I wanted to, to talk a little bit about if, if you wanted to move forward, um, with respect to the '22 projects, again, which is the 5 million of HVAC. VPSA has, has released their, uh, application process and their timing. Talked to you today, get your, your feedback, obviously. The school board would need to take action. Talk to you today, get your your feedback. Obviously, the school board would need to take action tomorrow. Requesting, there's no, you'll see in a minute, that's nothing holds you to anything just yet. The school board would take action to request the county county board supervisors consider approval of a borrowing through VPSA. The application deadline is the twenty-eighth of February. So. The school board will submit an application. It's also signed by the county as well. It's very clear in that application, the county's not committed in any way to that borrowing either. You would need to hold a public hearing and formally consider. That application and the amount that you want to request from VPSA by March twenty-eighth. That's sort of the deadline that we would have to say to say whether we're whether we're in or out, so they can put together their packages to sell the bonds. VPSA would go to the market. Late April, they've got April twenty-sixth, that may move, you know, one way there a little bit, but that's pretty pretty good. That's when interest rates would be locked in. So between now and then, rates could move up, they could hold steady, they could go down. But we would be subject to interest rate movement between now and then. They would close on the transaction mid-May. And then then funds would be available to to the county. So you you have, we obviously wanted to introduce it to you today. What that impact of those different borrowings are. With respect to the first five million tranche that, you know, we can layer that in a little bit and and have less of an impact on you. But when we start to add those other ones on there, you can see the additional revenues that we've got to come up with. And that's where. And Percy and his staff need to need to dig in a little bit and try to come up with ways to to try to fund those. Fund those additional monies that you might need. So, Mr. Chairman, let me stop there. There's a lot of stuff thrown at you and I'm happy to 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 back up and talk through anything you'd like to talk through.
One immediate question, I'll knock it out, gentlemen, is can you give us alternative funding sources? I think BML is another. Just so we can say we've done our due diligence and. Or is it worse to VPSA just so?
VPSA is going to be the the lowest interest rate that you can get. VPSA is. Again, based off of the credit of the Commonwealth of Virginia, they sell bonds that are triple A and double A plus. So that's really the highest credit rating that you can get. They're down in the public markets. There are some other programs. BML Vega has some programs where they're they just go to banks and get loans. Same thing that we've done when we've just gone to banks and get direct loans from them. In some cases, the timing in particular, we'll look at it and go, well, if we if we don't want to wait or we can't wait till the next VPSA sale. Say just we missed the the spring sale, we want to do something in the summer. We will go and we'll borrow through a bank the same way that we would with other projects for the county. You know, the interest, the the interest costs are going to be maybe a little bit higher. But not not incredibly higher. But I think I would say that your ability to borrow the lowest cost of funds is going to be is going to be through VPSI.
I always want to question if you you're saying it's going to jump up like at twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six if we only do four million dollars. Now, what if we put. As for more now, at the lower rate, would does it, is there a point where it would level out or be more beneficial to get more now since it's lower?
Yeah. You know, it's it's all just a function of in in our perspective cash flow, right? So you certainly could move. In particular, that the twenty-four borrowing. From a tax perspective, you're only allowed to borrow what you reasonably expect to spend over the next three years. So sometimes you got to look a little bit about about that. You can't can't borrow for way out there. So but you could easily borrow for twenty-three and twenty-four. One of the questions may be, when do we start to layer in that debt service as well? You know, again, you could push the principal out a little bit to try to have less of an impact. These types of projects, you know, I don't know the useful life of a of a track. We've assumed you're borrowing for twenty years. You could borrow for longer, right? And that's going to lower your annual payments. You pay more interest over time if you borrow for twenty-five years versus versus twenty years. But that's a way to lower your your cash flow.
I have a question if I could ask Dr. White. When we had the joint meeting here several months ago. Maybe I missed it, but were 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 the schools asking for a track that's one point two two million dollars?
Hey, Dr. White, and for anybody else, since we do have the Zoom meeting going on, if you're going to answer the question, you wouldn't mind coming up and just speaking into the mic so that. Everyone out in cyberspace can hear you. There's one right here.
Yes, not I don't have the CIP in front of me right now. But we did talk about the need for something in the near future. It's not the immediate need right now. Because parts of our track right now are crumbling. And so in the near future. Five years or so, we may, it may not be usable. So you can maintain repairs to the degree that it's usable and.
Yeah, because.
And and for what it is, is that there's a culvert underneath it that's crumbling and it's the water fill-in is causing it to to erode.
We were. Basically, it was in my interpretation, we were discussing critical needs that had been, you know, kicked down the road. And I do believe.
Yeah.
You know, I know that it's a great facility there, you know, but also. In a meeting that Ed and I were at with the with the school board. In regards to the garage. We kind of kicked around the idea of sharing it with with the county. Where would, what are you looking at the location of this facility?
We had discussed something behind the the current courtyard. There's some land back there that I understand. That if we could use that for a joint, yes.
Yeah, I remember.
Build something out with that. Yeah. One of the things I will mention is that. And it is on a tight timeline, so I don't know if it's feasible now. But we did ask our director of operations. And our director of finance to go back and look at any state. Contracts that we could piggyback on or ride on. And we were able to get some pricing that was much lower than what we had originally gotten from ABM. So we'd possibly be able to collapse some more of those projects, those HVAC projects at different schools, not just AES. Under that five million dollars. So we might be able to get more work done for that same amount of money. And so we're looking at that. We want to find all feasible ways that we can, you know, make this this a. A more realistic. Goal for the schools and the county with the borrowing of the bond of money from BIPSO.
Maybe some of the spring twenty twenty-two thousand million plus the thirty-three three million three from spring of twenty-four. Might could be consolidated and help.
Oh, that would be.
Yes. Devin Board, if we could still want more money at the lower rate, maybe.
The only thing with that, it is if we want to do some things in the summer, this coming summer, of course, the timeline would be very tight. But we could look at that and see when we could do some of the work. You you never want to do work, this type of construction, when school is in session. However, there are some workarounds, there are some timelines. I've done a roof project when I was a principal at high school during school. It's not the best, it's not ideal, but it can be done.
Does this timeline match with availability of of resources?
Materials if.
Hard, I know it's hard.
Some of the things, if we were able to do it and we wanted to work on that timeline, we'd really be stretching it and it'd be really be tight. I know that the project we were talking about in Hamilton Huns Middle School. We are looking at taking them on ourselves. And the reason why is that the need for the materials, the resources. We have to pull the trigger fairly quickly in order to get that to be feasible to to complete or just to work on in this summer. So it's a timeline and and getting those resources, when they can get the the materials.
If if we are borrowing the the money based on a twenty-year bond. Have we established that the HVAC units, that that is pretty much the life of those units, twenty twenty years? The if we are borrowing the 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 funds on a twenty-year bond. Have we established that the life of the units are.
Roughly twenty.
Going to last twenty years.
Twenty-five years. We've stretched these ones out much longer.
Yeah.
But yes, sir.
Okay, I just didn't want to borrow the money for twenty years and have to start replacing them before twenty. Yeah.
I thought we were around fifteen years.
We've been able to 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 stretch ours.
I I know you have. And that should have never happened.
Yeah.
But it did.
Yes.
But I'm saying the life of one today, I thought was around fifteen. That's what I thought too.
The the. There will be some tax analysis that has to be done by the by the bond lawyers. It hasn't been done. That will limit how far we can borrow. The tax rules allow us to borrow. No greater than a hundred and twenty percent of the useful life of the asset. So. They'll actually go and look at each of the each of the pieces of equipment, because some of them probably are longer than twenty, but some of them may be shorter. But you put them all together and average, put an average life together. So there will be a cap that the the bond lawyers will tell us that we can't borrow past that past that date. So there is there is a there's a little bit of a governor on the on the taxes and borrowing side that that doesn't allow you to finance up, you know, HVAC unit for fifty years.
So if you've come up with this number that says about a man for twenty years, and they say, oh, it's not going to last for eighteen, they might say, well, you can get forty-eight or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I again, I I I expect, just based on my experience in doing, I I expect that we would be able to borrow for a twenty-year project. Because again, it's the it's the weighted average life of the asset versus the average life of the of the bond issue, because you're paying off. This debt and approximately the average life will be about fifteen years.
So that would, the same would apply to the track. So how how old is the existing track?
Stephen asked me, and I told him it was probably close to twenty years, but then I don't think it was actually there when I was.
It was.
I think it was built like right after. Okay, well, then it was built like right, it was part of that project. Because that's the whole time I was in school, they were building something.
When we came on board, I think that was one of the things we had, everybody saying, why do we spend so much of the track? We had just started. That was only about twelve years.
It's only been ten.
So only ten? That's right, twelve would be the whole term.
Mr. Senator, could you describe King William's credit rating? I know it's it's not a.
Yeah, so you don't you don't have a credit rating per se.
Next best thing.
Or at all. But but that doesn't mean anything. A lot of a lot of counties don't have credit ratings unless you're in the market borrowing on your own. The credit rating is not is not really necessary, in particular, given the the ability to go through some of the state programs that are out there that you have. But but no, we've looked at your. Your sort of debt profile, your rating profile historically. You know, you've done a good job of building your fund balance in particular. That was something that. A number of years ago, we we talked with the county about growing that fund balance levels. My reflection is that you you did that. The sort of debt to assess value, you look at your overall debt profile, the county doesn't have a a large amount of debt outstanding. Even with some of the bigger projects that you've done over the last few years. The other thing you look at is sort of when you're when you're paying off your debt, how quickly are you paying it off? And that's one of the things that. It's called a payout ratio, which we measure how much of your debt you pay off over a ten-year period. The higher, the better. And if you look at your debt, we go back to slide. Six. You pay off the vast majority of your debt between now and twenty twenty thirty. So your payout ratio is probably. An excess of seventy, seventy-five percent. Which would put you at the probably the higher level of the of the credit rating agencies. Again. It's a little deceptive though, because we borrow, like other smaller jurisdictions, we borrow infrequently, right? So sort of comes in waves where you will. You'll be in a situation like you are now, where you 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 haven't issued a a large amount of debt or you're paying and you paid it off a bunch of it. And then you do another borrowing. You borrow for twenty years. And so your payout ratio is going to get much lower. Because so that doesn't bother me as much. When I see a a lower payout ratio, but you are in a position where, given the decline in your debt service over the next ten years. That that if you have projects in the future, you'll be able to fill in sort of the trough there with future debt service and future borrowing. Right. And that's going to lead me to my next question, was we just spent the first half of the meeting talking about development and infrastructure and and all of those needs here. You know, are we thinking about future needs on our side of the house as well when we're looking at these numbers? I know we don't have a crystal ball, but. Obviously, we want to have sufficient sufficient space. And I guess it it sounds like we've got. Space for capacity, right? We just we don't want to start knocking on that door of, you know, how much is is where we start to eclipse a reasonable amount of debt to be carrying at any one time. And we have talked in the past, we're looking at some some projects more on the utility side. Right. And obviously, the goal with the utilities versus your sort of your general fund or your school projects is to have the utilities be able to pay for themselves. And the the initial analysis that we've got and we've looked at is, again, there's there's utility projects that you have. You're you're going to be able to pay for them from the revenues that you've been generating from the utilities. Which again, I think it's the connection fees that you had historically that that built up some reserves in those funds. That will be able to service that service that debt. Your system is a little bit weighted toward those connection fees too, as opposed to, you know, just recurring recurring revenue. And so it's a little bit of a, you got to you got to prepare for situations where those where those connection fees maybe don't. Come in as good a clip as they have historically to. Right. And and I understand that whatever you were doing with utilities in the near future, we're certainly looking to to pay for with. We want it to be self-supporting. But there was a lot of discussion tonight about things that were outside of even utilities. Obviously, we're talking about ideas of expanding. Park services of, you know, industrial, you know, prepping industrial sites in the northern end of the county, which would certainly require investment, you know, above. You know, what you would have in in income right now from existing systems. So just things that, again, that. So that same sort of analysis that we did to show you what the impact would be for these school projects going forward is something that that can be done. For other projects that you have to. So the the more the more we know about what your projects are, your CIP, for example, over the next five or ten years. And what those projected costs are going to be, you can layer in over your existing debt. You know, what may be borrowed, what may be pay-go cash funding for part of your projects if you can. And what that impact will look like sort of long-term on the county as well. Absolutely, that's 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 very good long-term planning to do. The base of it, though, has to be, you know, the how good is, how good are the assumptions that we're using with respect to. When are these projects? What are the projects? How much are they going to cost? And when are they gonna, when are you projecting that they're going to come online? Right, because we're talking in twenty-year terms out here earlier. And if you look at the overall debt service load, it's it's pretty stable. You know, and and then starts to decline even quite a lot, starting at even twenty thirty. So so the nearer term, even the ten years out. So. Yeah. You know, to me, it looks like we've got even bringing on new projects, like, looks like we've got. Looking at Water Tower, I'm not as concerned about because we're looking to fund that out of utilities funds. But I'm just talking about the ability to do projects outside even the scope of utilities in the next. You know, twenty years, if we want to take on some of these projects that we talked about here tonight.
Mr. Senator.
Yeah, I was going to add that. Kind of the same vein as that is that. We funded out of the school division. County debts are now counting the. A lot of this conversation about existing debt for just the schools, when that drops. And all placed together, it's all county money. But we have just in consideration of those numbers, look at both, you know. The debt service for the schools, like here's their debt service that drops in three years, whereas the county, we're looking at four projects.
So just to give you a sense, your debt service goes down by, call it, two million dollars between now and twenty thirty-two, right? So that two million dollars would allow you to fund. Twenty-five million dollars for the projects or bonds that at four percent for twenty years. So I mean, that's really back the envelope, but. It's something, again, that if you if you have that plan and it lays out when those projects are supposed to come online. We can then run some analysis that'll show how that would get layered in and what did what the change in your debt service would be. Then it's a matter of, well, how how do we come up with additional revenue to cover, if any, additional revenue? Does it come from growth in the county? Does it come from. When their resources from one place to another, budget cuts, come from additional taxes? Budget cuts, come from additional, uh, taxes, uh, so that's how you go with that.
If we need a nod tonight on this.
I think Dr. White, you're having your meeting tomorrow.
Yes, yeah, the, uh, the, um, we've asked the school board to vote on the resolution. For the five million dollar bond, move that forward, get that approval, so that the county can then move forward with their side of it. Uh, and we're also going to, uh, ask the county to move forward on the Hamilton Homes Middle School project. Which again, we are looking to fund out of our resources, so that would not be a part of that five million dollar, uh, bond.
Okay, so is it premature to do anything tonight? Until we, the school board votes?
Yeah, there's no action required of you tonight, and I think that the point was, if you had a, a, a really big issue and you wanted to, to sort of stop the process. Uh, we want to at least be able to, to take that under consideration. The school board can, can always make the request, have their meeting tomorrow, make the request to you. Um, that would just, that just allows them to be able to submit the application, and Mr. Ashcraft. Also has to sign the VPSA application as well, prior to your formal action. But the signing of that application is black and white, it in no way commits, by, by Mr. Ashcraft, in no way commits the county. Uh, in moving forward the VPSA, and so you would, would have a formal consideration of this, if you want to move forward with it, put it on the agenda. At that, uh, March, uh, March meeting. Yeah, the twenty, the twenty-eighth, and that would have to be after a public hearing. Um, that would need to be scheduled as well, so maybe if the, the one thing that you would need to let Mr. Ashcraft know is. If you want to move forward it to at least, uh, advertise the public hearing. Um, uh, for the twenty-eighth, if you don't have another meeting before now and then.
No.
Um, but you might need to, to authorize them to do that.
Well, gentlemen, any, any objection to moving forward with this concept?
This is for the initial five million, right? I know, Dr. White, you mentioned, uh, another piece. Is that gonna be part of this initial bond, or, or are we just asking for the five million at this point?
Right now, it's the five million, but what we were saying is that, uh, based on some of the pricing that we hope we're able to secure. We may be able to encapsulate more projects under that five million, instead of having to borrow more for it in the immediacy.
Mr. Sanders, and that's what I was kind of asking about, that they're just trying to ask for the VPSA, try to get the grant, if, would there be any. Detriment to them asking for more now, can, except for not really obligated, if they ask for six million, maybe cover a little more of the other. And then we decided on the twenty-eighth of March to only go with five, or can we go less?
You, you, you absolutely.
That's what I was wanting, go ahead and ask for, I'm just saying, maybe ask for more since the rate's gonna be so low now.
You could do that, I, and I, I was, while, uh, Superintendent was talking, I was running some quick numbers. Um, if you were to move the, the, uh, twenty-three borrowing, again, one point six million of, of borrowing, of project costs. Um, at a lower interest rate, uh, the differences from, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year at four percent. It's gonna be in the one oh five range, hundred and five thousand range, so, so save you, um. Around twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, in costs.
That's what I was going for, trying to save some money over time, getting it to the benefit, and if we don't, not obligated to do it, if we decide later not to do it. We can always say no and go for a lesser amount, I'm just saying, maybe we should ask.
It would be the March timeframe where you could, again, there, there, the application you can, you can fill out. The, the school board has to put a dollar amount in their, in their resolution, so you can certainly start higher, and then the board can go with a lower number. Okay, I, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea.
No, that, that's another discussion item for tomorrow, right, I guess.
Uh, no, we would have to change the resolution that we have worked on, uh, that we're gonna present tomorrow, and instead of. Five million, put the six million dollar in there, so that's just a commitment. School board, they can make that decision, bring it before you all, and then when you all decide, what is the actual borrowing amount that you want to obligate the county?
We still have to be accepted too.
We'll have, yeah, well, you'll fill out an application, we'll talk with VPSA, um, I, I wouldn't expect that there would be any problems with them, um, approving you. Um, but, you know, I can't speak for them.
Mr. Sanderson, as always, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. White. Mr. Ashcraft, no, no, uh, surprises or concerns, I know it's preliminary, but. Next up, Sheriff Jeff Walton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. For this late hour to give you a very brief. Presentation on where your sheriff's office has been in, uh, the last year. You know, we started this a few years ago. And then COVID came along, and, uh, we've missed the opportunity to let you know what our activities are and where, where we've been. I think you have this in your packet, I'm not gonna read to you everything in there, we're gonna skip through it because. It's getting late, and I know you're getting tired, but I will point out some of the more important things. If you stop right there. It was interesting, I guess most of you saw Jeopardy the other night, or last week, where King William Courthouse was mentioned in, uh, one of the questions for Jeopardy. Which we're pretty proud of, of our courthouse, and it was, uh, I think this is the second time it's been on Jeopardy over the years, so. You can, uh, move on along. Let's skip to the next, the next page, page four is what I've got on mine. This is kind of a, a brief overview of the different, uh, sections of the sheriff's office. We have, of course, the administrative side of things, which is myself, my two captains. Uh, and my lieutenant who kind of runs the, the day-to-day operations of the, of the sheriff's office, one, one captain. My chief deputy runs the, the, uh, court services, communications, mostly the administrative side. And I have an operations captain that handles, uh, patrol, animal control, uh, investigations, and all that's under him. So, uh, it's a lot of work to be done. Uh, we have been hampered a little bit in the last year, and I'll get to that a little bit further on, uh, with not having full staffing. All right, court services unit falls under, uh, my chief deputy also, uh, he handles the oversight of that. Moving on, I'm gonna skip on over to page eight. Of course, most, most sheriff's offices or police departments have, uh, core functions, and of course, as, as a law enforcement provider, we. We provide a core function of crime prevention, that's our primary responsibility, is to try to prevent that crime from happening in their, in our rural community. Sometimes we're successful, sometimes we play catch-up, uh, and that's just, it's, it's up and down. Uh, another function is to dirt, deter crime, we do that by the visibility of our patrol cars out on the highway, deputies being seen. Uh, we have a park walk and talk program where the deputies get out of the cars, they go into this business establishment, uh, have conversation with the public. And with the business owners, that way it's, it's a, it's a visible deterrent for the officer or deputy to be, uh, in those businesses. Of course, apprehension of offenders, we spend a lot of time, uh, serving arrest warrants, uh, picking up folks that are warned by not only King William County. Uh, but also from other jurisdictions who pass through here. One of that, uh, other goals is to recover and return stolen property, we try really hard to make that happen, that's not always very easy. Of course, the traffic issues, it was interesting, I might be getting way off topic here, uh, to solve the, I saw the presentation with the, the. Uh, traffic circle for three sixty and thirty, and I, I want you to, I did chuckle back there, because I'm not sure all those tractor trailers can make those, those circles. And that's a very busy intersection, as you all well know.
Man, he is still spinning over that.
It looks good.
They're, they're, they're nice, they, they look good, but I'm not sure how that would work here, that's just my, my personal opinion. On, on page ten, uh. Of the, uh, slide there, let's see. Yes, uh, some work that we completed, uh, last year, uh, this has been a long road coming, and we'll, you'll see more about this at the twentieth board meeting. Uh, but we finally became a fully accredited law enforcement agency, and, uh, we'll be presented with their. Uh, certificate, if you will, or it was, of the recognition of that night. Uh, we replaced a lot of our failing AEDs in our patrol cars, we, we're usually. Uh, patrol deputies are the first ones to a scene, uh, we get a call for unresponsive person or person, uh, not breathing. The deputies are usually there before the rescue squad, just because they're out there and they're a little bit closer sometimes, so we like to keep those up to date, we're able to replace those. Uh, MDTs, our mobile computers, which is almost like a lifeline these days, for the guys working out on roads, they have their computer, have all the information at their fingertips. Uh, that too, we worked hard with the finance department, were able to use some federal funds to replace. Uh, those and bring those aging computers up to date, they were, the original computers we got were, were grant back, uh. I think Cuccinelli was the attorney general at the time, we, we were able to get those federal funds through the Abbott, uh, civil suit that was, uh, settled. Well, we're able to, in a nine-one-one center, we're able to implement the text nine-one-one, uh, many folks now are all tech savvy with. Texting everything, so now we're able to receive emergency, uh, text, if you will, uh, through that system, so that if someone can't talk on their phone. They're able to send a message, we can receive that message and respond back. All of our nine-one-one communications officers are now emergency medical dispatchers, all certified in that emergency medical dispatch, in other words, they. They're able to give pre-arrival advice to the, or instructions to the victim that's called in, uh, until a rescue squad. Or fire department arrive on the scene, uh, on several occasions now, we've instructed folks. Uh, on CPR, until the rescue was, was able to arrive, or deputy was to arrive to assist them. Uh, I know you've heard a lot about the Marcus Alert System in the last year, uh, the General Assembly passed that law last year to. Uh, help alleviate some of the strain, if you will, in, in our counter with the mental health, uh, crisis, uh, person. Uh, you know, for some reason, we, law enforcement usually gets that call, we're, we're, we're in a rural community, we don't have the. The, uh, established protocols that other jurisdictions have, uh, but, but the General Assembly saw that, that we needed to have something in place. And they had came, they came up with this, this law last year, the Marcus Alert. Uh, so, e- every locality must come up with, and it is up to date, must come up with a plan. Uh, on how to deal with a, a mental health crisis. So if, if we were just receiving nine-one-one call from someone saying, my son, my daughter, my friend is suicidal. Uh, we would normally send an deputy out there to, uh, investigate, determine if that was a, a need. And then call the mental health crisis center and try to get them some help, and we would transport them to a facility, whether it would be the, um. Uh, psychiatric hospital, a emergency room facility, or just to the counseling center for an evaluation, we would do that. Uh, the, the plan that they want us to do with Marcus is to have a gauged response. Uh, they really didn't want a uniformed officer showing up on, at someone's door anymore, they wanted us to first dial the number eight, one, one, or eight something. Nine eight eight, excuse me, nine eight eight, and have, uh. That person transferred to that phone call, where they did a, an evaluation. And while they're doing that evaluation on the phone, dispatchers have to remain on the line, in case they decide, well, we needed a law enforcement officer to respond. So it was kind of stretching that out. Um. Then, then you'd have to get an emergency response team of the, uh, counselors, uh, to come out and assist. And we've been working on this for the last year, trying to get a plan together. And that mental health folks, CSP down here, said, we don't have the funding, and we don't have the people to do that. So we're getting from Richmond saying, you've got to do this, and our local CSP says, well, we can't do it, we don't have the folks. So there's a bill before the General Assembly now, this, and, and I'm not sure where it's at. Uh, it started out with, if you have a population of less than eighty thousand, then you could opt out of this program, uh, then there was some.
I saw forty thousand.
Yes, modification to forty thousand, I'm not sure where that's at in the, well, in the house or the city, though I'm not sure where that's at at this point. But we're working, we're working with our regional partners, uh, we have a working group of law enforcement agencies. From here to Richmond County, and it may be even further in the northern neck, all the, all the agencies within the, the CSP here, to try to come up with a plan. So e- even if, if they change that, we still are moving forward with something to try to help us out with that. We also were able to complete, uh, the existing, uh, the bill that was existing wing of the courthouse last year, as you all knew. Uh, having trials at the courthouse became a very, uh, big challenge. Because of separation and COVID, you know, having people six feet apart, masking, and trying to have a trial. Was very difficult in a courtroom, we only have two courtrooms over there, many, many times we're having two courts running. And we had to have somewhere to, if, lack of a better word, stack the jury, put the jury so that we could keep them away from, uh, the other folks and to keep them separated. That has been very beneficial to us to have that room, uh, we also use it for a training room, we didn't have a facility or location where we could actually do training for air staff. And other courthouse staff, but that has been very beneficial to have that. Uh, where court, Doc, as you'll see a little bit later. Here is, is really growing, if you move to page twelve, oh. Talks about new deputies, yes, so we were able to hire some new deputies to fill in, like, last year, we, we, uh, lost a lot of deputies through retirement. And all through just moving on to other, other careers, uh, so we're able to fill in some of those deputies. Uh, they haven't helped us out yet on the street, because two of those that you see pictured are still in the academy. Uh, so we're, we're still a little short on the street, uh, but, but they are working. Hopefully soon to get out, out of the academy, back out on the road, where we can, uh, get some, uh, real work out of them, I know they'll be glad to get out of the academy themselves. On page thirteen, talk a little bit about involvement, it was interesting to hear the school talk about the career technical, uh, education. Uh, the criminal justice program, we helped them with that, uh, providing, uh, folks for, uh, mentorship, if you will. We've actually sponsored an internship at the sheriff's office, uh, through that program, and one of those persons who came through that program is now one of my sergeants. Uh, he, he's done a really great job, and, um, and I have a communications officer who was also a, a product of that. That, uh, program, so we're very supportive of that. We've gotten, we're involved in the community from many different ways, with, you know, activities happening in the community, we do a national drug takeback. And that's next page fifteen, I think, yep. Uh, and of course, we, we've done some training on the opiate, uh, crisis material, and we provide our deputies on the street with Narcan. Many times the deputies, again, are the first ones to arrive on the scene of someone who's overdosed on the opiate. But for the deputy's arrival to administer that Narcan, the outcomes could have been drastically different, but the deputies are there to administer the Narcan. Until the rescue squad arrives. And we're available for any, on, on the next page sixteen, for any speaking engagement, if folks need us to come and talk to them about. To share a little bit about what we do and what we are, and maybe some advice on some activities that are happening. On the next page, page seventeen shows there, uh, our friends who stop by, are some, uh, great support from our community that come by. And, uh, bring us goodies and just visit with us. Now to the most important part on page eighteen, we get to the numbers, the statistics. And you see then twenty-one, we actually, it looks like a call volume went down, it had the total number of calls in the dispatch were fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. Which is down almost, almost a thousand calls from last year, from twenty. Uh, and same thing for administrative calls, on the next page, page nineteen. Uh, this total sheriff's office calls went down, and I want to explain a little bit about part of why that happened. Now, you think, oh, well, we're not getting as many calls, we're not doing as much, but in reality, what happened is, more people are at home, we don't, we don't, we're not doing as many. Uh, security checks of residences, because we provide security for folks when they go out of town, or when things happen, when folks stayed at home last year and doing staycations. And not leaving, going out of town, a lot of that, uh, stopped last year. And some of that is actually officer-generated, uh, incidents, uh, with not having the full staffing of deputies on the road. Uh, the officer-initiated calls went down, in other words, if they stopped someone for speeding, then they discovered, uh, a drug violation. Or stolen property, those type things, those are things that we consider a separate incident. So there's a lot, lot of factors into why the calls went down. Uh, and if you look back over the last few years, we're kind of up and down, one year we have a, a high number, the next year we have a low number, so it's, it's pretty much. Uh, I guess consistent with that. Last year, we only had, well, only, we had two deputies who were assaulted, uh, it was only one incident, the previous year we had three, but last year was two. It was an incident where two deputies were struck by a vehicle as a subject was trying to flee a scene. They weren't injured. They were just knocked out of the way, thank goodness. Now, the the number of reportable crimes. And that's criminal incidents against crimes or crimes against person and property increased this past year. We had a lot more of those calls. And of course, those require more investigation, more time for the deputies be off the road, following up on these type of crimes. So. We did see an increase in that. And if you look over on the next page, it's kind of, it's kind of a breakdown of what the types of calls we're having. I know now, I think Chris is putting in your packet each month or our monthly statistics. I hope that helps kind of explain a little bit about what we're doing. Those numbers are unaudited at that point. You know, those are just raw numbers that come off each month. These are the more refined numbers at the end of the year. And I can't say these are one hundred percent accurate. We are we are experiencing as as we get into this, more and more issues we've seen with their records vendor. So we're working to try to resolve some of those numbers. But for example, we saw an increase in civil issues. People arguing over. Say arguing over if property line disputes or those type things or or some rental action and they want someone out of their home and they won't leave, that that type of thing creates a civil action. Of course, domestic calls have increased. Fraud and that type of call, you I guess you probably get a phone call every day from someone who's trying to get you to just give them some information or sell something. Unfortunately, we have quite a few folks. Who fall for that information and and they give out personal information over the phone. They think it's legitimate, then it turns out to not to be. And that gets a little more complicated in trying to solve those crimes because it's very difficult to track someone who's. Forwarding phone calls through different states and countries and but they're able to get your money pretty quickly. On the bottom of that page is is general law enforcement questions, questions. We get a lot of calls from folks that that want to see a deputy, have deputy come by. And it it actually ranges from any number of things that doesn't call classify in any of these categories here, so falls under that that category. A lot of these calls are not reportable crimes. It's just citizens needing assistance. Down at, if you flip over to the next page, legal service, paper service, if you will, we served like a three hundred of those this this past year. Well over the ninety four from last year. And these are not the civil papers. I'll get to those in a minute because that's that's a whole nother. Category that to slip, flip on over to the next page twenty two. Warrant service on the bottom of that says page fifty seven. And though that's that's a different number from and warrants that we could serve, you'll see in a few minutes. That's a number of. Of when someone comes to the courthouse to turn themselves in and we call the deputy off the road to execute that warrant. Those are those numbers there. On the next page, twenty three. Traffic crash is about the same. They're not that not much different from this year, the last year. A number of traffic summers went down. Which is correlates to the number of deputies on the street. We don't have that many deputies on the street. You don't have that many summers coming in. And the deputies that are working the road sometimes get tied up with other calls and unable to do traffic enforcement. Or DUIs went up to, well, not a lot, but a little bit in twenty one. Twenty is still a lot of DUIs. On page twenty four, talking about the courts, the courts have been at biggest growth. In twenty one, we had a hundred and fifty court days of the year. We had fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty people come through the courthouse door. That's a lot of folks visiting the courthouse. On page twenty five. Number civil papers served by the courts and civil process guys, about forty six hundred, almost forty seven hundred papers. Served, that includes protective orders, subpoenas, garnishments, eviction notices and those type things. And then you have the warrants that are served by the deputies on the road, six hundred and seventy one. That's an increase in arrest warrants done by those guys who are at the serving the warrants that that are. The crimes that they've investigated, that they've gotten charged against someone, that they end up serving the warrants. Big increase last year is because of, again, because of the number of court days was their miles driven for prison transport. You see, that was quite a bit higher. In twenty one than in twenty. And I don't see that getting any easier in the next next year. We we've already been told for this year. In the next few months, we've got six jury trials scheduled, starting at the end of March, April and May. And that's a huge, huge attacks on us to get those jury notices out and then have staffing at the courthouse. Because unfortunately, what's happening is we're running into days where we have the circuit court with a jury trial, but I've got the juvenile domestic court or the general district court running the same day. And I've got to have deputies in each courtroom, a minimum of four deputies in each courtroom. And the deputies in the front of the building to for security purposes. So it becomes very difficult sometimes to find folks where we're pulling people off the road. To be in the courtroom so that we can have the level of staffing that we need. And sometime ago, someone made a comment, well, why do you need all those people in a courtroom? You know, I went in there, nothing was going on. Well, that was just one person coming into a courtroom for a short period of time. Cases are scheduled throughout the entire day. And you know, you might have a a one person trial here at ten o'clock, then eleven o'clock, we have a, you know, a more serious felony crime. That's being heard. It requires a lot more people in there. So it changes as the day goes on. And the juvenile domestic relations court, they handle cases that start early in the morning. They've been running really all day long till four, five o'clock in the afternoon. So it's been, it's been very busy. Lastly, here, we've made a few changes in our in our holding area last year. When we bring prisoners in, arrests are coming, what we call Sallyport, they come into the back of the building into the secure holding area. That's that top picture there. Well, they also need to see a magistrate. And in the past, what we we do, the way that building was. Set up, we'd bring them out of that secure area down a hallway through our office to the magistrate to be seen. But it really wasn't the safest thing to do. We didn't have too many incidents, but we occasionally would have someone who would, you know, want to. Not be seen or not want to see a magistrate. So with this facility, way it's set up now, we put a window in there, a computer with a magistrate's video. They sit on the bench, it's a secure bench, they're shackled to the bench, they can't move. The magistrate's able to see them. They're in the secure area the entire time. So that helps with that. And then, of course, being trying to be more transparent with. Things going on in today's world law enforcement, we were able to secure body cameras this year and put those into use. So all of my patrol deputies and patrol officers issued body worn cameras now that they activate when they have a public contact. And that's not just saying when they stop at the store and we're talking, that they activate a camera and a recording. It's more for when they activate calls. When they go on calls, they activate the camera so that they can. For one, it's it's good documentation for evidence and what encounter, but it's also good in transparency for folks to be able to see. How we encounter and how we deal with with folks. Had a few promotions last year. Moved some folks up to sergeants to have a sergeant or supervisor on each shift so that we're able to. Have better oversight on what's going on out there. The candidate is broke up in patrol zones. I have a north patrol zone and a south patrol zone. And deputies tend to stay one end of the other, but unfortunately, a lot of the calls that we get require more than a one deputy response. So deputies are going out of the patrol area to assist the other deputy. Once we get the shifts back to being full, you know, we'd have the three people on the shift. And the sergeants, we'd come back to where they were supposed to be and that's assisting each deputy in those patrol zones as needed. So that's kind of a quick, and I'm sorry, I was moving really fast, so I know you guys are late and I know you can read this, but if you have any questions, I'm certainly here to try to answer.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. We thank you, of course. Thank all of your deputies, sergeants for their hard work as well, dispatch and everybody that's working every day for.
I saw recently that the scoreboard thinks you should have two more warm bodies.
Yeah, I believe, and I haven't seen anything written on how that's going to work yet, but I believe with the last census, maybe the population has gone up enough that I get two more, a lot of positions out of that. A lot of times we get those, a lot of positions, but they unfund those and that's probably what has happened. I think it was a push to get those positions funded this year so we don't have to wait. Last year, I was able to get one position for court services that had been sitting there waiting, waiting for years and they finally do. I still have some. What we call the master deputy program where the deputies are career development for the state. I have two positions, but the state won't fund those. So I I could get somebody in there, but there's no funding to do that, so.
Sheriff, if you want to mention your video, I thought was really excellent.
I'm sorry, sir?
The video you had with the promotional hiring.
The hiring? Sergeant Upshaw, the gentleman, they graduated from the Bridges Technical School or attended that. Did a really good job putting that together. Fortunately, we still haven't had a lot of folks come out and apply for positions. We're really having a hard time. Getting recruits to come out and get folks to show their applications. We're just, you know, I get four or five now, rather. Years ago, you get twenty, thirty, forty applicants and now you get four or five applicants. And of those four and five, by the time they get through the testing, you drop down to one or two.
It's a tough job.
The salary is still a factor.
Salary is still a factor and you know, it it happens every year. Every year, we, you know, we we've moved our salaries up. Where the guys are, we thought was comparable to everybody around us. And as soon as we hit that mark, the others started going back up. So it's it's and I don't know what the solution to that is. You know, it's always, it's always going to be that way, I think, honestly.
Are we losing officers to other localities?
I've I've lost a couple to other localities, yes. They they moved out and and I can't say they moved for better pay, but they moved for better career development. Some of those did. One of those left, went away and came back. So, you know. We're certainly glad to get a certified officer back in the mix. But it's it's a challenge. It really is. And and everybody around us is having the same issue. We talk about this all the time and and there's no real solution. I mean, you can throw money at it and that helps. But we still need to get somehow another get people to apply for these positions and we just haven't found the. The thing yet to get them to do that. You know, law enforcement has taken a bad rap for the last few years. Everybody knows that. And whether it's here at King William or whether it's in Richmond, it doesn't matter. The folks tend to group as all in one. Even though I hear rural King William County, our folks, our citizens and and our interaction with them is completely different from those in a more urban setting. Because we know our folks, we see them all the time. We build a relationship with that folks. We see and we call to the same houses over and over and over again. In in a more urbanized area, they don't know those folks. You know, they get calls, they just go see them about ten minutes and then they don't see them anymore. So it's different. It's different.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could get. Resolution twenty two ten, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's been customary for this body to recognize February is Black History Month. You have a resolution in your packet to that effect. We would ask your consideration for adoption this evening.
So moved. Exactly.
Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. And it would be appropriate to post that on the website tomorrow?
Yes, I believe we've. We've not done a resolution yet, but we have, we have made other mentions of the of this being Black History, but throughout our social media.
Mr. Moore, did we skip two items?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We, Mr. Ashcraft suggested, due to the late. Meeting, late timeframe that we delete fire and EMS D and E, I mean, C and D, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Until next session. Do you want to go through them? We can bring them back.
It it happened in the transition when the commissions were were adjourning their meeting, Mr. Ashcraft. In the interest of time. Since those are not time sensitive items that we do.
Thanks for catching me. Okay, item five up, Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have our county attorney on Zoom for any reference or questions to this item, but I will introduce it. There has been discussion at the planning commission level and I believe among the members of the board as the procedure in which to appoint. A member of this body to the planning commission and in an. A memorandum on February the fourth that I shared with the board from Mr. McRoberts. There's two key provisions in this that he would ask that you consider for adoption this evening. One is that the member of the commission may be a member of the governing body. And I emphasize may, it's not shall. So it's it's certainly always up to to the board supervisors if that's the direction that they want to go to appoint one of its members. And secondly, the term of each of the. The members shall be co extensive with the term of office to which he or she has been elected or appointed. Unless the governing body at the first regular meeting of each year, which is your organizational meeting. Appoints others to serve as the representatives and not a member of the board of supervisors. So if a board of the member supervisors is appointed, they will continue to serve until they are not appointed. Either the subsequent years or until the end of their term expires, then they would have to be reappointed if they're so duly elected to the board again. Again, Mr. McRoberts is on Zoom. If you have any questions, this is his, this is his work.
Mr. McRoberts, Ed Moore, do you have any further comments or?
No, I really don't. The memo, I think, was self explanatory and the policy really is intended to simply reflect. What the statute says. And so if you're looking to clarify things and you could. Adopt this as a policy or you could just take this as an informational item, it's really up to the board.
I I think what what I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, and what I'd like to see is that our February, you know, at at the, what we would call the regular meeting. Which is rather indistinguishable from these meetings anyway, that notwithstanding, but is is a resolution. To supersede the resolution we adopted in January and to clarify that we appoint Mr. Greenwood pursuant to this code section to a term that would expire with the term of his office. And I'd like to see that as a resolution that we could consider at the February.
Does not the recommendation include the unless clause that another member has voted in?
Well, I think I think tying it to the code section would accomplish that would. Then again, unless unless the board took action to appoint a designated was not, you know, Mr. Greenwood or a member of the board that.
Andrew, is that something, is that something that we can do to make it run with his term?
Well, that's the, what the statute says is unless the board decides to do something different, either appoint a different supervisor. Not appoint a supervisor, appoint a citizen instead. Unless the board takes action at its organizational meeting. To do something different, then the appointment lasts until the end of that supervisor's term. So I think Travis is really just suggesting that we. Clarify that we are following the statute. That doesn't mean that the board can't act in the future in a way that's consistent with the statute. You know, you can put it in the resolution or not. The statute still allows the board to take action, to do something different once a year if it wishes.
Well, does your, does your recommend verbiage change in any way? It seems like we're following what we just discussed.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 policy speaks for itself and so does the statute. So it's really up to the board how y'all wish to handle it at this point. It's not your organizational meeting, so I don't think you've got the authority right now to change horses. I think what Travis is suggesting is to. You know, clarify that what we did in January was to appoint a supervisor to the planning commission, which by statute. Is for the remainder of his term unless the board makes another decision in the future.
Okay. So, Mr. Ashcraft, if you can drop that resolution for us.
We will see that. It's on your February twenty eighth agenda.
Very good.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any requests?
That we move on.
I would just like to make one.
I would just like to make one. I uh I spoke to Mr. Hudgens. Uh I got a letter from BMRC about a crossing for the Sweet Sue project. And I actually spoke to a representative from the MRC and it seems to be some question about their permitting process. Uh if I could, I would just like to ask for an update uh when that information is gathered. And that's it.
That we conclude the meeting as quickly as possible.
Mr. Hudgens?
Real quick, uh I think you have one thing we need to do. It's a minor thing. It's not a lot of money, but we should bring our deputies that are in the academy up to the starting salary that just like the fire department is. It would right now only affect two deputies. They start out at a lower salary and then after they graduate, it goes to the forty two five. Firefighters start out at forty two five. Before they get to the academy. That's all I want to.
A budget. Yeah, discussion.
Sure. We'll get all the information and share it with everyone. Mr. Chairman, I would also request to the board that uh you abort closed session for this evening. And I will have conversations with each of you one on one uh on on the matters that I was going to bring up. Unless uh unless you really want to go back.
I'm I'm hardcore. My crew duty day used to be twenty one hours, so I'm I'm good.
I'm typing a UVA gang, but I've got to get home and watch.
Okay. With nothing uh more further issues, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
This branch.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Hi. Thank you all.